For the improved program, capital improvement program. And we'll open that portion of the meeting now. We have Patrick, you're up.
I think Beverly's actually going to start us off.
Okay. Good evening, Commissioners. Tonight, we do have presentations prepared for you for the county's general capital improvement program. You have a notebook in front of you with a lot of detailed information in it that we'll go over. There will be three parts to the presentation. The first part I will go over is the GFOA National Finance Officers Association Best Practices for Capital Planning. I'll go through these briefly with you. Again, you have the detail on that in your notebook. The second part of the presentation will be a look at the five-year CIP for fiscal year 2024 through 2029. Each department that is here that represents their department will go over their requested projects for that plan. The departments that will be presenting that information tonight are Facilities. Chris Boyd with Facilities will be doing his presentation. Our Facilities project, as you're aware, also includes the Sheriff's Office and the jail project. So, we also have the sheriff here with us tonight that will speak about the upcoming jail needs, as well as the captain from the jail, Ms. Lori Pierce. They have some information they wanted to share with you about the current needs that are going on and expansion requests in the future. You will also hear from Patrick Nalan, Assistant County Manager. He will be presenting the capital needs for Union EMS, as well as the volunteer fire departments for their air pack replacement needs. You will also hear from Vicki Calcutt. She will present the projects for our Communications Department for E911. We also have John Emilio, the IT Director, with us to present the project needs for information technology. And Bjorn Hansen will discuss the DOT Critical Intersection projects with you as well. Following the departments' presentations, I will wrap up the presentations with what we are recommending to fund in the manager's recommended budget for fiscal year 2024. Again, as I said, you have a notebook with a lot of detailed information in it tonight. As we go through the presentations, we plan to hit the major highlights. We are asking for your feedback for the long-term CIP plan. We're not asking you to take any action on it, but your feedback is appreciated. We will take your feedback and then go and put together a financial funding strategy for the long-term CIP in conjunction with our management team, myself, and our financial advisor. And we will follow back up with you at a later date on the long-term funding strategy. So, if you don't have any questions about the process tonight, I'll go ahead and get started.
I do, Beverly, just, I want to point out that we may not finish with this in the 45 minutes allotted. If that's the case, then we'll just carry this over towards the end of the six o'clock meeting. So, just in case we go too long, we'll open the regular meeting and start at that agenda item and go from there.
Thank you all. So, the first presentation tonight I have, again, as I mentioned, is the GFOA's Best Practices and Guidelines for Putting Together a Capital Improvement Plan for a County. Just the highlights of this, the recommendation is that for your capital plan, that a county would have a capital planning policy in place, that we would work for a master plan or comprehensive plans, that we would co-mingle those together to create the multi-year capital plan, and that we have a system in place for the capital asset management. And also, how we communicate that out to the public is important. So, just briefly, this is our capital planning cycle that we go through as a staff. To begin with, as recommended, is that we have a capital planning policy in place, and which we do. And the details of that policy, the highlights, are in your notebook. I'm not going to spend a lot of time going through that. Following that, our Facilities team works together with consultants to put together a master plan. You will hear from Chris Boyd tonight about the current master plans he has been working off of for his recommended CIP for 2024 through 2029. Following the master plan and cycle, we work together with departments, not only Facilities, but all the other departments mentioned, to put together their capital needs for projects for infrastructure and assets that we maintain. Following that, Chris Boyd and his team do a capital asset management program to take an assessment of our current facilities that are in place, what the needs are for those improvements, and to be able to maintain the property we currently have. And then, we also work to communicate out to the public, after those plans are in place, what we're actually doing and how we're spending county dollars. If you recall, quarterly, we do a CIP report that is presented to you as a board, as information only. In this report, it includes all of our projects that are major, that we're working on, where we're at in the process with that, and how much money has been spent, and what the funding sources are. And that will conclude my presentation for the high-level detail for the GFOA Best Planning Practices. And if you don't have any questions, I'm going to move forward to the actual CIP plan.
Any questions?
Thank you. So, this presentation will take you through each department's project request for 2024 through 2029. I'm going to go over the five-year summary with you, and then, we will go through each department simultaneously, so it will be a continuous flow of a presentation. And feel free, at any time, to stop and ask questions on the projects that the departments are actually referring to. So, this is the very high-level, five-year summary look, and this is by department broken down. As you can see, for 2024 through 2029, our county facility needs are around $144 million. For public safety, this includes EMS capital and the fire air packs, as we discussed before. For the five-year look, we are asking for funding for $14.3 million. For Communications, total funding for the five-year plan is around $3.8 million. Information Technology project needs are around $3.5 million. And our DOT Critical Intersection projects, we asked for a flat funding amount of $100,000 per year, so that's $600,000 over the five-year window. So, total CIP needs that have been identified by the departments for the next five years are $166,308,000. So, to begin with, you will start now going through the departmental projects, and I would ask Chris Boyd to please come and share with the Facilities.
Good evening, Commissioners, and thanks for giving me a few minutes, you know, of your evening to talk about our facility's CIP, and specifically, what's currently proposed in the county manager's budget related to the facilities' projects. I'm going to talk briefly about some highlights of our 23-year, talk a little bit about our planning process for CIP, talk about our five-year plan, and then, a little bit about our fiscal year '24 requests that you'll see this year. As Beverly mentioned, there are a lot of lists in your handout, so hopefully, you've got enough information to take back, review, and, you know, if you've got any questions tonight, I'm happy to answer. And if you've got any later date, once you've taken a closer look at the data, I'm happy to answer those, too. So, I won't spend much time on the highlights, other than to show you kind of what our completed projects are. You can see really two big projects that we finished up this year, emergency services and Sheriff's Office, but in total, about $44.8 million worth of projects. We also have projects in planning and design phase totaling about $10.8 million. We've got some currently bidding or recently bid. You've actually seen some of those in some of the other, some of the agenda items recently, but another $8.8 million in that phase. And then, in construction, we've got several projects that are currently in construction, including the big ones are the library, Board of Elections renovation, which is about to finish up, and the Progress Building renovation, which is another one that's just about to wrap up. So, about $22 million in projects that are currently in construction. So, our planning process for CIP, we basically have four funding groups. We like to think of them as buckets of money. So, we currently have those four buckets, including major capital, critical infrastructure, facility repair renovation, and our operating capital. A little more detail about those, major capital projects that are greater than $300,000. Critical infrastructure certainly are those that are critical facilities and/or critical systems, or address critical system issues and repairs. Our facility repair and renovation are projects that are between $100,000 and $300,000. And then, our operating capital are projects, are smaller projects that are about $100,000 and less. So, our CIP is a needs-based CIP. So, how do we identify the need? How do we identify projects? We do several things. The first is, we do some internal assessments. We do meet with division directors. Some of the division directors are needed on annual, on an annual basis, to talk about their needs, their wants, what they forecast for space requirements. We also do some work order review. So, basically, we've got an asset management program that we tie back to equipment. Whenever we've got problems, issues, we take a quick look at, or a look at, our work order history whenever trying to evaluate whether a project warrants consideration in whatever fiscal year it is. In 2020, we completed facility condition assessment. Beverly mentioned that earlier. That basically is a really big database that we keep all our information as far as most of our projects in. We also have completed, over the last three years, space needs assessment at the Sheriff's Office and Jail, Jesse Hems Park in 2022, which I think you were just shared what that master plan looked like by GM. And then, we completed in 2022 the Union County Facilities Space Needs Assessment. And so, all those things inform our projects and our project list. So, we also have some key drivers and assumptions as we're going into the planning process. This year, some of those included, we can, we think there's going to be continued growth in county population and services related, that the county provides, based on a 2050 comprehensive plan. We clearly heard the need for new courtrooms, or additional courtrooms, as we talked with the Judicial Center. We know that there's some capacity issues at the jail. In addition to the jail needing significant repairs related to code compliance and most of some other things. And you'll hear more about some of those needs from the Sheriff's Group once they have a chance to get up and talk about it. Everyone should be fully aware, we've got limited space available in the Government Center and Judicial. So, when we're talking about space needs requests within those facilities, we've got to make sure that we're utilizing every space we can wisely, efficiently, and effectively within those two facilities. And then, finally, we want to focus on the most cost-responsible solution, as we can, to these space needs, and not necessarily go for the highest cost, you know, do the most you can. This is really, I'm going to say, a plan that tries to focus not doing as, you know, the most that we have to do. So, hopefully, you'll see that as we go through the plan. So, what is the plan, the 2024 to '29 plan? The first two lines you'll see are Facility Repair Innovation and Operating Capital. In 2024, those funding levels stay the same as last year. You'll see an increase every two years, this is a little over 5%, over those two years, for those two buckets of money. Moving down to our major capital, which is really the most significant part of the capital plan, you'll see our highest priority is listed as a jail expansion. Again, the Sheriff's Group will probably talk a little bit about that project, but I'll share some information. We are asking for, in the first year, a $2 million advanced planning appropriation, followed in 2025 by the remainder of design funds, and then, in 2026, funding the full construction. The total project budget for that currently is $66,200,000. So, significant project. The project actually will build about 100,000 square foot of new square footage. It includes a core, which includes laundry, kitchen, magistrate, and kind of all the other typical ancillary and related kind of components within a jail, in addition to building square footage for 96 additional beds. The next on the list is jail rooftop HVAC systems. We're splitting that into two years to accomplish in '24 and '25. The next on the list is Judicial Government Center renovations. That's a project that budgeted currently at $12.8 million. We're asking for, again, design funds in the first year in 2024, remainder of construction funds in 2025. That project will look to build two additional courtrooms. And I say "build," renovate the Judicial Center for two additional courtrooms. It will require us to relocate, right now, it's proposed to be the District Attorney's Office over to the Government Center, which in turn means we've got, you know, dominoes falling everywhere. So, we've got to move operation within Government Center to another space in the Government Center, which would be tax. So, we're, right now, we're looking at tax moving to four, five, and six, in order to make room for the District Attorney, so that we've got two spaces available to make two new courtrooms. Now, that's not all their courtroom needs, but it does address some of the short-term issues that they're having with courts. Next on the list is UC Parks ADA improvements in 2025. You can see the numbers. Next biggest project is the Human Services expansion, and that's a funding start in 2026 and funding construction 2027. It's a $19,300,000 total project budget. That's looking to add about 30,000, based on our base needs assessment with that department or departments. They're looking about 30,000 square feet that they're, they're going to need over the next 10 years. So, that's what that project will address. Then, we've got a lot of other projects, and if you've got any questions about any of those, I'm happy to, you know, to go over those. Moving down to our critical infrastructure, if you'll see in this fiscal year, we've got money allocated over a three-year period for electrical provisions, for roll-up generators to enable some of the schools to be more well-positioned to act as emergency shelters. So, one school a year is what we're looking at there. The next is UPS infrastructure upgrades and replacements. It's kind of recurring fund, you know, as we're adding more of these UPS systems, we're starting to see, and basically, it's replacement of batteries. And so, we're starting to see that, you know, batteries are starting to become a major thing that we're going to have to deal with. Then, we've got a security system upgrades. This is, right now, budgeted $2 million. We're looking to, and this is basically addressing some of the concerns that were, I guess, found during the security assessment. And so, the first year is basically some of the low-hanging fruit, you know, that we can, we can address some of the highest and most critical things to start in year one. And then, you can see kind of an adjusted funding model all the way to, through the five years totaled $2 million. We also have a project to install a generator at the Progress Building. And if you consider what we're going to have in that building, we're going to have the Transportation Department, which runs whether there's power or not. We're going, we have the Sheriff's Office that stores critical and emergency response within that facility, and we house emergency management and most of their emergency response equipment in that facility. So, it's going to be really important that we be able to safely get people in and out of that during, during power outages. And then, finally, we've got fueling stations at three locations throughout the county, one at Sheriff's Office, one at Progress, and then, one at the Water Ops Center. So, spread around the county in order to deal with some of the issues we've seen with supply issues. You know, we've seen a couple, actually, pipeline issues, and we had shorts, you know, some shortages, and we were, you know, a little bit worried about how we were going to get gas in some of our vehicles, especially Sheriff's Office. So, at any rate, those are the critical infrastructure projects. And as Beverly mentioned, you can see our total over the six, over the five years is $144 million. So, with that, you know, I'll open up for questions.
Chris, I want to point something out.
Yeah, go ahead.
Just, okay, it's all right with the chairman. If you, can you go back to the slide previously? Because I don't want there to be any misunderstandings. If you look under where it says UC Jail Expansion, that is Phase One. That is not the full build-out cost for a jail. I don't want anyone to construe that that's what it's going to cost to build a new jail. That is a component of a new jail. Out-years past 2029 is when we plan to have Phase Two, Phase Three, whatever's left for that. That's not shown in this capital plan, but this would not build a complete jail. And also, the same thing when you see for Phase One for Judicial and Government Center renovations, that is Phase One as well. There are future phases that you'd have to have in order to make that work. So, this is taking your capital needs and trying to spread them out over time, but there are always things in the out-years that you won't see in this first five- or six-year timeframe. I just wanted to make that clear.
How many phases are there?
For the jail, I believe there's three.
Three phases.
I believe for the Judicial Government Center renovations.
Two phases.
Two phases.
Going back to the jail, just for Phase One, so $66,200,000 is only Phase One.
That's right.
Okay? Well, what's the total?
The total's right at $120 million.
Okay. Thank you.
And again, those are, those are estimates for today. Obviously, they can change based on the construction market.
Yeah, I will share, too, that are, these estimates for projects are actually escalated, they're not today's dollars, they're escalated to the year dollars. So, we've used, it's almost, it's a little over 3.2%. The average over the five years, it's like five this year, 4.75 the next year, and then it goes down to kind of a normal two and a half, two and a half percent. So, they are escalated numbers.
Are we going to continue to use the old jail?
Yes, in the first phase, we will. So, that increases the bed capacity to, I think it's 376 beds. You know, right now, we're at 280. And Phase Two will build 280 and allow us to start decommissioning the old jail, because sometime, we're going to have to decommission that old jail. And then, Phase Three is actually another 280. So, we end up with a total capacity of 600.
So, once you achieve Phase Three, and you decommission the old jail, is the plan to take that down?
Yes.
Or keep it?
Yeah, some of the cost included in, I think it's a partial in Phase Two, is some demolition related in Phase Two, and then, full demolition in Phase Three.
Okay. And you said 600 beds?
Yeah, total of 600 beds.
Okay.
Currently at 280.
I guess that seems a little expensive compared to a school.
Say that one more time, sir.
I said, I guess that seems a little expensive compared to a school that like...
It's, usually, jail construction is much more expensive than school construction.
Should we outlaw crime?
Huh?
Should we just outlaw crime?
Yeah. You can outlaw crime on your, yeah, let's try that and see if it works.
Maybe we get to Phase One and just tell people, you know, stop.
Yeah, there you go.
No more crime, please.
Yeah, I think it relates to courthouses, too, right? And how many courts you need.
So, didn't we just approve a huge investment in locks and doors?
Yeah, absolutely.
Will any of that be able to be used in the new design, or will all of that be demolished?
The only use is going to be coordination between, it's going to be a modern locking system, you know, so it's an electronic locking system. So, there'll be, you'll be able to coordinate with the new system. Now, consider, so, if we fund this in fiscal year '26 to construction, it's going to take two years to finish it from that. So, we're looking at '27 to '28, you know, before we finish that. To Brian's point, the jail is, the second phase is, you know, and I think it is '23. And so, that's another four years to build that. And at that point, those locks are, you know, 10 years, you know, 10 years old.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. So, any other questions right now?
Questions, Brian or David?
No, no, right now.
Okay. All right, so, I guess we'll turn it over to the sheriff. Sheriff, if you want to come up.
Thank you for having us. I won't take but just a minute, but I'm going to turn it over to Captain Lori Pierce, who designed these slides, took the pictures, and lives it every day in that jail. She's the captain over that jail. She can answer any question you want to have.
Lori?
Good evening, how are you? So, I am here to give you the presentation on the Detention Center and our needs. Of course, the current status of our building was built in '93. We moved into that facility in 1994, and that was because of a lawsuit, Huntley versus McQuirt, and that was an overcrowding issue. It took us three and a half years to build the facility that we are currently in, and it is not a 280 facility, it's a 264. We cannot house efficiently 264 inmates because of housing needs, such as people that have to be separated from each other, medical needs, and so forth. Of course, jail code says that we cannot go over our capacity. If we go over our capacity, we have to reach out to surrounding counties and send our inmates to those counties and pay for those inmates to be in those facilities. So, the need for a new jail is now. The current facility is 79,000 square feet, and because of this lawsuit, and it did not allow for extended planning to take place because of the need to expedite the build. We like the medical area that is needing, needed, and the screening for inmates as they come in. Our population '94 to where we are today, we have tripled in population. So, with the triple of the population also comes with rising crime. So, the need for our jail is huge. Our officers and their duties, they walk approximately 40 miles a week, which is 160 miles a month. Each shift has about 14 officers that are assigned to the shift, but in reality, there's only about eight because of basic law enforcement training, DOCC training, and vacation, et cetera. Because we are shorthanded, a lot of officers end up, do not take in their holiday hours in which they lose every year. Our average population is about 240, on the average, about 200 males and 35 females. Back in 2020, we did a renovation in the kitchen. The current facility was almost 30 years old. We upgraded all of the kitchen appliances and everything, and so, that is owned by the county versus by the contracted kitchen service. A good bit of this construction took place by our jail staff. So, we broke down all of the kitchen stuff, we hauled it all out. Of course, we did contract some of the renovations, but a lot of the work was done by our jail staff to the sum of $375,000. We do have the capital improvement costs. We have the generator there that's mentioned. The current generator there is 30 years old. It cannot support the jail or the jail admin area. So, when we lose power, we're, we're barely treading water. Other expenses that we have incurred in the jail, of course, every year that the jail keeps operating, the worst that these facilities and maintaining them just adds up. So, you can see a lot of the costs that we've had here lately to the sum of $356,000. So, with all that put together, you get the jail, the kitchen renovations, the capital improvements that are planned, other expenses, and then, of course, all the plumbing and stuff we've had to deal with, we're pushing almost $6 million in costs. Recently, we did remodel our command and release area. This desk here is a 30-year-old desk. That was a desk when I first started in 1995. We did tear that down. We did tear that down, thanks to our jail staff, and we were able to actually put in a whole new desk and new flooring within the past couple of weeks. So it does look a lot better, but thanks to the jail staff who did the manual labor, it was a little less than $45,000. So we did talk a little bit about the, the jail maintenance replacement and expansion. Of course, yes, that does not include a new jail. I wish we could get one for $5 million, but we can't. But three phases to finish in 2029 with a 600-bed facility is not feasible for today. We are one of the larger counties in the area with the smallest jail.
Thank you, Sheriff, for the low crime rate.
Do I know?
Thank you, Sheriff, for the low crime rate.
Yes, I totally agree. We did briefly hear about the jail block renovations. We've been talking about that, but there is no way that we can outfit the four big blocks for $2 million. That, I'll just be honest with you, that price isn't gonna, that's not going to cover what it's going to take. Of course, you got the generator, and then we mentioned the door controls and locks. Now, the door controls were upgraded in 2011, but we are in need of replacement now. Our computers go down. We lost half of our controls just the other day, which really limits our capabilities of supervising the inmates and controlling the locks within the facility. So that is a huge line item right there. And the cell door, door locks, we'll talk about them shortly. So the other capital improvement project is the domestic water source. I will tell you that we have lost water on multiple occasions because of the main water line out on 74. When it breaks and the jail is out of water, we literally are at the mercy of Public Works to get us back up and running because our kitchen can't run without water. If the health department comes, that's a big no-no because our kitchen workers can't wash their hands and prepare the meals for the inmates. Not to mention, we have to bring in portages, and we have to buy pallets of water to provide them with the water at the jail. So the domestic water source is a definite need at the jail. We are in the works of getting the washers and dryers outfitted. Those are 30 years old as well. When they break down, I'm not sure who's going to do the laundry at the jail. All right, so there's the block renovations that we talked about. Again, it will definitely take more than $2 million. Just like I said, the four big blocks, they were built in 94, and the things that are needed is the painting, the food traps, the hinges, air vents, and the ductwork. Of course, the sinks and toilets need a flow valve system. This would prevent the inmates from flooding their cell, which causes the officers to have to clean up floods on a regular basis. So the flow valve system being installed with the sinks and toilets would be a huge asset. Again, the door controls and locks that we talked about, they are quite insufficient at this time. These are the original locks from when the jail was built in 94, and average inmate can actually prop the door with a dustpan.
With a what?
A dustpan. Yes, sir.
A dustpan?
Yes, sir. Yeah, so there's a broom and a dustpan in the block for them to clean.
Oh, you give them, to the prisoners, a dustpan to keep in their room?
Yes, sir, it's plastic. Well, it's, it's in the common area, so if they want to clean their room, which we encourage. All right, so here's the generator. Like I mentioned, it is the generator from the original building in 94, and it does not support our current facility.
Now, the generator's coming from a different location, though, correct?
Yes, it is currently owned, but we've been talking generator for three years.
Right, but it's coming, you've got one coming from Public Works to the jail now?
I've been hearing that for three years.
What's the holdup on that?
Chris, correct me if I'm wrong, but the, that has been bid out, and we are working through contract routing to do the work. So the generator's onsite, we're just working through the paperwork to get the contractor to be able to install it. So that should be done shortly.
Okay. Is that satisfactory?
Fingers crossed.
Okay.
All right, so lastly is the potable water. Again, the kitchen and jail code and jail inspectors, when we are out of water, we are definitely falling not up to par and could really be shut down. And if we get shut down by the jail inspector, again, we're having to look at sending 200 and something inmates just around the counties who also don't have the room to hold our inmates. We do have a pipe leak issue, and I will play a lovely little video so you can see the extent of our issues. So this started in December of '22. We did a water line repair in the ceiling here, and then in December, in January, we had another leak in the same location. Again, you can see the ceilings are just soaking full of water. And then, of course, we had another one in February. So you can see the pipes literally just shaking. That's what they call hammering, water hammering. So basically, when a toilet gets flushed, and it causes a shimmy back up the pipe, and so that's causing weakness in the joints. So you can... So our officers are having to work in this type of environment on a regular basis. Luckily, when we got the line fixed in February, we haven't had any issues lately, so fingers are crossed.
Any cold issue, like is it too, was that when we had some cold snaps, or it's just the hammering?
It's the hammering.
Is there a solution for that hammering?
So we had a hammering valves put in to keep it from causing the shaking up the line, and since we've had the hammering valves put in, that's helped. But the valves in the block would also help to where it keeps them from flushing the commode so often, it limits it to how often they could flush the commode. So that would help if we had the valves put into, in the toilets and sinks. So here is one of our main, it's the same hallway you just saw the leaks, our I Block hallway. The cast iron pipe that you see on the left there, that was the actual pipe that was pulled out from the ground. You can see where the cast iron pipe in the jail is corroding. Of course, the jail is full of cast iron pipe, so this is probably just the start of the need for replacement of pipes, and they're all under concrete. So as you can see in the middle in the right picture, literally, we had to dig up that entire line and replace it and fix it. So that shut that whole block down for several weeks.
Well, what was that line servicing? Do you know, right off the top of your head, was it servicing the kitchen area?
Yes, so kitchen, it's a drain line. Yes, sir.
Was the concrete the culprit to this happening with the pipes?
Just corrosion over years. Cast iron's averaged around 30 to 50 years. Yep. And so when we ran a camera down through the line to kind of see what was going on, the camera actually got stuck on the cast iron where it was rusted away. And so luckily, they were able to get their camera out of our pipe line, and then that's when we realized we had to back up and punt and replace the line. All right, so the state of North Carolina is requiring that we certify our officers before we put them to work in the jail, requiring them to complete DOC. We did create a new training room here for about $8,000 to get this process started because it will be a requirement by the state. Here are some other pictures, random pictures of our facility that still has needs to be repaired and replaced. So you can see the bottom two pictures, bottom left and center. The back wall of the jail is literally separating.
Lori, going back to the $8.3 million, because of the state mandates, did the state help fund that, or was that?
Eight thousand.
Okay, eight thousand.
Yes, yeah, so we got a smart board and a smart podium and things like that.
Okay. Yes, ma'am. Did the state send any money for that, or we just had to absorb it locally?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Thank you. Yep.
In the, in the new facility, are you doing those training in the new facility, or do we have to still send them to SBCC or somewhere like that?
No, I got my school director certification, so I'm the school director of our detention officer certification course.
So you can use the new facility for that, some of that?
Yes, sure. All right, so in closing, I know Chris Boyd said that we could build the core in 96 beds, but this is just a limited area, and it would definitely not be sufficient for our true needs. We need a jail now. We need a 600-bed facility built now. If we start the planning phase, you're easily looking at five to six years to build a sufficient need for the county. But I do invite each of you to come to the jail and see our facility. So do you have any questions?
Any questions?
Well, I just have a concern. When you say now, that contradicts your understanding that it's going to take five to six years. So I'm a little confused on, on the daily average, and I do recognize our population has tripled from when this one was built, but I'm a little confused by your statements of now when we know that it can't happen now.
We do know it can't happen now, but we do know that you can't base building a new jail on population.
Mm-hmm.
Pop, that's not, it's past population, it's past, it's population 10 years ago, 15 years ago. Now, it's, the jail is falling apart. We're spending...
And we understand that. I'm, I'm just concerned by the now statements.
Oh, no.
Because, because, I mean, you know, there's project management involved and design involved, and, and it just concerns me that, you know, if now's the answer, then I don't think we can get there.
Well, I, but, let me say this.
And the daily average kind of threw me off a little bit, too.
I think Chris is doing what he thinks the county needs to do. I don't have a problem with that, but we're just putting a Band-Aid on it, to be honest with you. We're behind, but I don't mean a little bit behind. Even his plan is not starting until '24 to even plan. So you're talking about sometime in 2030 or '29 to have a very small Band-Aid put on a big problem. And the jail facility, I don't think can stand it. I don't think it is going to last till then.
Well, and that's why I wanted to have this conversation, because I, you know, I definitely see where staff is stepping in and doing a lot of the work. But again, we've also looked at the timeline, and we're, we're looking at 2028, 2030, and the now statement, I just kind of threw me off.
Well, I would ask a simple question. Where are you going to build it?
Mm-hmm.
We don't know.
Yeah, I think that's the, the issue here is, is, you know, the, the original plan was to obviously use the site and try to build in components, and, and that's, I'm not saying that's perfect. And, and to the, to the sheriff's office's point, we'd love to be able to say, let's build it and start now. We'd love to say that. It's a matter of funding, and usually jails are not, they don't do very well on referendums. The board essentially has to make a decision that you're going to put funding toward this, and whatever rate adjustments have to come with that, or where we find the money to pay for that. So this plan is built in a, in a mechanism of trying to spread that out over time. It's not a perfect solution, but we welcome any, any recommendations that we can do, and whatever the board is comfortable with. Honestly, we're trying to give you a plan that you think you can sustain financially instead of 130 million today. It's spread that out over time, but there, it's really what you're willing to absorb financially.
What was the total cost of the new sheriff's department?
Hundred and twenty.
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven, I believe.
Twenty, am I?
Twenty-seven, I believe.
Oh, that one.
Okay. So, you know, should we have done this before that, or should, are we okay with what we're doing? Your office space there in the back, is it, is it completely empty now?
No, there's nothing empty down there.
Okay, so you got office space full?
We got everything.
But we're not going to replace that, we're just going to replace jail cells, right?
Just the jail, just the jail. And to be honest with you, the jail itself can't be added on to, and everybody knows that, it's in the floodplain. So there's got to be a different location for that jail.
So we got to move it to somewhere in the county?
You're going to have to move it or work out a plan to use the parking lots, or use something else different. I mean, I'm not saying it can't be done, it's got to go up, out, around, some, but...
The only place we got a lot of sewer capacity is Marvin.
Yeah.
They ain't going to want a jail. We got 1.5 million gallons of sewer there. But, you know, it's, it's a concern, Monroe serves it, so it's going to have to be somewhere around Monroe, in Monroe's area, because we would be replacing the sewer capacity that we're currently using in Monroe with that, this capacity. So it wouldn't, it wouldn't affect the sewer capacity necessarily except for the new sales. And so we'd have to something that. We've got, we've got about 600,000 gallons of sewer. How much is the prediction of how much sewer this extra capacity?
Lord, I don't know nothing about sewer.
Well, you come half-prepared, go back and prepare that, and then come back.
I don't know nothing about sewer.
Well, every...
You flush it, and it's gone.
Every bedroom's what, every bedroom's 70?
Unless you're in the jail.
Unless you're in the jail, and you flush the toilet 20 times, staggering, did you hear?
Okay, I just, I just wanted to clarify. This is a really nice presentation, and thank you very, very much. I just, I mean, obviously, we have a timeline.
And we need to identify the one.
We do, and that's not, we're not saying it's got to be built next week, but it's got to be built sooner than later.
And it sounds like we need to find a location.
Right, we do need to find it.
Before it can even be built.
But if you...
So we have a lot of work to do.
Well, we're putting about $5 or $6 million a year in maintenance in that jail now, so...
So part of the, part of the funding that is set aside for 2024 is, is scoping and planning, and where do you put it? How do you make that work? That's actually part of that cost. And then you, the 25 is full engineering design, and then you start your construction in '26. And as Chris said, that's a two, couple, a couple of years or so for construction. So you, you're right, but you got to start somewhere, and this is, the, the start would be, we put 2 million and go towards the scope and the planning to decide where is the best location for that.
So I know you have, you know, a, a difficult challenge in front of you because now's not going to happen.
Oh, no, we know that.
Okay. Thank you very much.
We know that, but if we don't push now, then we're behind.
And we can't build it worth that.
That's right.
And we don't have land.
And we don't have sewer capacity. Anybody from Marvin area here?
Awesome.
Okay. Next, who's got next, Bill?
Do you want to stop here and pick this up?
Yeah, we're at 6 o'clock, okay. Yeah, let's stop here, pick up later. Now, we will open up the regular meeting with Union County Board of Commissioners, and Commissioner David Williams has the invocation. Commissioner Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If you're so inclined, please bow your head and pray with me. Heavenly Father, we come before you in humility and faith. We thank you for our many blessings. Today, we come asking for guidance and strength. Show us the way and fill us with wisdom as we deliberate on the issues before us. We ask also for patience and understanding as we face our challenges with grace. All these things we humbly ask in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And nobody signed up for the public. All right, first, we have the informal comments, and we have some signed up online. Nobody's signed up on the form outside. Anybody want a quick chance to do that? Okay. The ones that have signed up online... The ones that have signed up online. First, we have Katie Ryan, speaking on public safety concerns. And if you will, when you come to the lectern, state your name and address and we'll have three minutes.
Good evening, Commissioners and Sheriff Kathy. My name is Katie Ryan and I am a seven-year homeowner in Indian Trail. Do you need my specific address? Do you need my specific address?
You don't need to.
No, okay. Today I'm here to represent citizens concerned about animal welfare. We've heard many experiences from residents. Due to time limitations, those experiences will be submitted to you by email after this meeting. In all experiences, the common theme is residents reached out to county government for help but received none because ordinances for abandonment and cruelty are not specific enough for animal control to intercede. There is no ordinance for roaming at large dogs, which puts our children, livestock, and other companion animals at risk. It also makes our increasingly busy roads unsafe. County government currently offers no spay-neuter programs to reduce pet homelessness and no programs to help low-income residents to keep their pets. The burden of helping our community has fallen to everyday citizens and our amazing nonprofits. However, most of those volunteers are working professionals and parents who often use their own income to help fellow neighbors in need. That's unacceptable to me as a county resident in a county with a $500 million operating budget. We look to you, county commissioners, to improve our animal services. You approve rapid commercial and residential growth. Increase people means increase pets. Current services and policies no longer serve the need of a more dense population with increased wealth disparity. The current situation with our shelter has been a key example for improved services. The shelter was closed for intake due to the painting of kennels. Maintenance was not communicated in advance to the public and neither was a reopening timeline until yesterday. Thank you, Sheriff Kathy, for that update. Guidance on handling stray, injured, or ill animals was not provided to the public and residents were turned away. You've been contacted by several today. And you will hear from more tonight. And I remind animal advocates to please be respectful. We are here to support the shelter. There was no plan for managed intake or completing the maintenance in sections. County government did not allocate appropriate manpower or supplies to complete in a time-efficient manner. I understand the shelter was built in 2007 to serve a smaller population. In 2022, dog owner surrenders increased forty-six percent and stray dog increased...stray dog intake increased twenty-four percent. To serve our growing population, the commissioners need to either invest in a shelter capital improvement or develop new programs to decrease stray pet overpopulation and other causes for owner surrenders. As a first step towards finding these solutions, we propose the creation of an Animal Services Advisory Committee. There are twenty such boards and committees in the county already. An Animal Services Advisory Committee would fill an important gap for public feedback. The committee should hold public meetings to gather formal feedback from citizens. The committees would bring forth ideas for programs and policies to serve the needs of our very growing county. And finally, the committee would work in partnership with our wonderful team at Union County Animal Services to promote responsible pet ownership, reduce cat and dog overpopulation, and help our shelter maintain shelter standards of excellence. The important point is we want to work with our shelter and we value our positive relationship with the wonderful shelter team. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today and I hope you will consider this suggestion. I'm happy to respond to questions if time allows or there are any. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Kathleen Murphy on animal welfare.
Hello, I'm Kathleen Murphy. I'm the Director of Rusty's Rescue Ranch. I have worked with Union County Animal Shelter probably for two or three years now. I do not reside in Union County. I reside in Iroh County. Ms. Katie Ryan invited me here to speak about animal rights and welfare. So let me get this started. I have seen a lot of problems with Union County. I've also noticed you guys have a lot of money and it's going to a lot of resources, but it could be utilized better. With the amount of operating budget your shelter has, there should be no reason that all of your pets are not leaving spayed or neutered. And with the shelter closing, I haven't seen a lot of updates on it until recently when it was brought to the attention of the public that it was closed for intake, which I appreciate, you know, giving an update and an opening date, but I've been reached out to by probably thirty, forty residents of Union County to help with a dog that they couldn't surrender to the shelter. And although I'd love to help, I don't get county funding, state funding. I get nothing. I'm funded by people that just have five dollars to give me sometimes. And that's unfortunate, but I can't help all the dogs that should be going to the shelter to get that initial vet care, to give some behavioral background and to kind of help the county residents. And they're ending up just dropping them off and turning them loose, and that's not safe for the public. I have three minutes and that's really...it's a really big concern. You don't know what's going on with these animals. I mean, not only the cats are decimating your local wildlife and birds. I love birds. They're...those cats are being turned loose and all the birds are dying. Then these dogs are being turned loose and you have no idea what they're doing or what they're getting up to. They have to eat. And eating could involve your chickens or your ducks or being starved so badly that they attack a child. And though that is not good, what other choice do your residents have? I really think that if you focused a lot more on your spay-and-neuter programs, there's a lot of low-income individuals in this area. Really incentivizing spay-and-neuter is what not only Union County has to do, the whole state of North Carolina has to do, but you have control over Union County and you have the ability to make a difference that way. North Carolina was just deemed the second state for the highest rate of euthanasia in the country, and that's ridiculous for the size state we are. So the next thing I want to bring up is what Katie brought up, is the ability for your people in your county to be able to have a voice for these animals. They don't. No one does. We have to come do these things and I had to drive an hour and a half to come down here and have this three-minute conversation one way with you guys to tell you what I think and what I think you should do and how you should change things. So I think an advisory committee is...
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Alicia Nerad, if I said that wrong, I apologize. Alicia Narad or Nerad from Monroe, 28112. Okay, Alicia's not here, right?
Hello. My name is Kimberly Williams and up until last May, I was an employee at our animal shelter ran by the Sheriff's Office. I live in Marshville and I became a stay-at-home mom, leaving a job that I loved. Tonight I want to speak from...to the perspective of a past staff member at the actual shelter, someone who has actually worked there and been through all the possible scenarios of animal welfare and control. My position at the shelter was the front desk administrative assistant. I talked to almost everyone that called in for help, probably a lot of you, too, in this room. I could go on and on about the calls about neighbors' dogs that run all over threatening their children's safety and the dogs that come on other people's property and kill their animals. But what do you say to these people? You tell them, "You can handle it with your illegally acquired firearm." Why do we have to give that response? Because our county's ordinances are out of date. There's no clear guidelines for our deputies to be able to assist the public properly. When you tell the public, "Your hands are tied. I can't do anything for you," they tell you what they really think about you. Staff at the shelter should not be receiving these responses. You guys should. I support the shelter and I love the shelter. They need our county's government support. Cruelty is happening all over Union County but can't be charged because of our unclear ordinances. Animals are breeding and dying in the streets homeless because the county has no way to support their citizens with low-cost free or free spay-neuter options. Before you say the Humane Society of Union County has a low-cost spay-and-neuter option, have you called there recently? Do you know how long it takes to get an appointment? Do you think that over a hundred dollars is low cost for most people to live in this county? The county does not fund the low-cost spay-neuter clinic ran by the Humane Society, correct? As a citizen, I feel like the Animal Services Advisory Committee would help link the residents of our county to animal control, making everyone feel part of the solution and as one team. Our county shelter is a wonderful example of a clean, fresh shelter that was not built for our population size today. As stated before, our population has tripled. It would be a huge step for our county to take steps to build a bigger shelter. This would ease space issues the shelter runs into because of the mass amounts of animals that are impounded. I want to make it clear, I'm not discounting the shelter or its staff. I am speaking to you, the county commissioners, voted in by our county to take animal welfare seriously. We aren't asking for the world, we're just asking for a little bit of effort. Thank you for hearing me speak and I hope you guys take the time to improve our county. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Richard Dalt.
Good evening. I'd just like to make a few comments on the Western Union Municipal Alliance, otherwise known as WUMA, the Confederation of Municipal Governments in Western Union County who have banded together to ask the state government to step in and grant them the power to make decisions about public utilities. Let's do a thought experiment. If these municipal governments were replaced by corporate real estate development boards, what difference would we see in their decision-making? None that I can see, and I would invite any member of these governments to step up here and give a single example of when they've made a decision that would differ from that of a corporate board. The mayor of my town, Waxor, has publicly said, "That's what a municipal agency is. They're developers of real estate." The very idea of "we, the people" is mocked. Despite many years of rising revenues, in 2021, they voted to gouge us for property taxes by twenty percent, but that's still not good enough for them. Just recently, they sent a survey out containing this yes-or-no question. "I would support a property tax increase if it would significantly improve the chance of survival from a cardiac arrest of a member of my family or one of my neighbors." If we oppose tax increases, we're demonized as heartless and irresponsible. If we express concerns about the speed of development, we're portrayed as extremists who want to keep everyone out. Fortunately, this board has wisely decided to pause and think about what we're doing and whether it is in the best interest of the people. Your decisions have been portrayed as extreme, even though they won't have much effect on development for several years. The screaming from these municipalities only makes sense if you see them for what they really are, corporate real estate development boards. Thank you for understanding what your job is and for acting in the interest of the public.
Thank you. Next, we have Angela Chu.
Good evening. My name is Angela Chu and I reside in Unionville. I am confident that I stand in front of very strong leaders that are willing to take swift action to better our community. My goal tonight is to bring a respectful but clear understanding of the concerns with our current animal ordinances. We are not the same county we were twenty-six years ago when our animal ordinances were last updated. We just heard tonight we have tripled in growth since then. The proposed amendments are geared toward those who refuse care for their animals and are creating public and health and safety issues. As accounting grows, we've seen an increase in the amount of neglect and cruelty warranting the need for this discussion. A major health and safety concern that must be addressed is dogs are allowed to roam freely in public as well as in others' private property. This makes our community vulnerable to various disease outbreaks as the vaccination status is unknown. It makes our roadways unsafe as traffic increases and puts growing number of children and livestock at risk for unwarted attacks. Defining when an unattended animal is at large and considered a stray, animal control can reunite or impound them, creating a safer environment for us to live, work, and play. Another key insufficiency is the lack of definitions of animal care. This removes any ambiguities and gives authorities proper written code to issue warnings or violations. Realistic definitions regarding adequate environment, sanitary conditions, food, water, cold and hot weather shelter, and standards of care have proven to be effective so that law enforcement can stop the neglect. Excluding this section has given freedom to cruel owners while tying the hands of our officers in unimaginable living conditions. An animal should not be subject to live without shelter in their excrement covered in parasites and sores without medical treatment. However, this is the reality we face in Union County. I have many graphic images that I can provide at your request of these horrendous living conditions. When discussing with surrounding counties on how they have successfully lowered animal-related cases, I was informed that it was due to the updating of their ordinances as well as issuing citations and fines. Owners were quick to rectify the situation to avoid legal fees and trouble. While I'm a conservative who believes in less government as well as supporting law enforcement, statistics are clear to show that there is a strong correlation between animal abuse and other crime-related activities. Conservative areas such as Lincoln County have already proven that by adding verbiage that I've mentioned above is extremely effective at reducing animal-related crime with no pushback. Psalms 12 states the righteous care for the needs of the animals but the kindest acts of the wicked or cruel. We have an obligation to care for our animals. If this board comes together with our Sheriff's Department and our community, I truly believe we will be a frontrunner in our state regarding animal welfare. Let's bring brilliant minds together, update our ordinances for fitting the needs of our growing county. Thank you very much.
Next is Gretchen McCollum.
Good evening. I'm Gretchen McCollum. I'm a lifelong resident. I'm kind of a unicorn in Union County. I've lived in Marshville for the last twenty-four years. A little bit about me is I am an animal advocate in many ways. I began my rescue journey in 2014 with my very first foster that came from Union County Animal Shelter. Since then, I've volunteered with several shelters and played a lot of different roles. I've spent thousands of...or I've transported thousands of miles, spent many, many hours taking pictures, temp testing, networking animals in need. I've lost track of how many animals I've fostered in and out of my home, including medical fostering. And I have, because of my rescue efforts, I got a certificate from South Piedmont for veterinary assisting. And firstly, I would like to say that this is not an attack of the shelter at all. I've worked closely with this shelter for years and I appreciate all they do and I feel like they appreciate me. This is a group of animal-loving citizens doing their best to help the many, many neglected stray animals in this county. I personally and we get calls, messages, and texts regularly. We are volunteers, but we get these calls regularly, daily, for people who need help. The rescue community is drowning locally, nationally, everywhere, drowning in animals as well as financially. And as a reminder, rescues are primarily unpaid volunteers that still have full-time jobs with families as well as many other commitments. Where I would like to focus is simply on the value of life. I know some people are baffled as to why we fight so hard, why it matters to us so much. Crazy rescuers. It's just a dog, right? What does that even really mean? That they don't deserve opportunity to love and be loved, that they're trash to be discarded? They are living, breathing creatures that were created by the same God that created me and you. God gave us dominion over animals, not so that we could mistreat them, abuse them, neglect them, or abandon them, but so that we could take care of them. But ultimately, as a society, we failed them miserably is precisely why we're here today. As animal advocates and rescuers, we're exhausted, but we continue to fight because these innocent animals have no voice. We are their voice. We fight for something bigger in the hopes that one day we won't have to. This is about laws and policies and procedures and the need for change and update, changes that must protect the innocent. That's all we want, for those that have no voice, to be protected. I will end this in saying, what has always been true for me and what continues to be true is I don't want to work against the people in charge or the shelter. I want to work with them and beside them. We can't do it without them, without you, but truth is you can't do it without us either, at least not without a lot of lives lost, and I feel that's worth mentioning and should be valued. I know many of you would agree that it's our duty... I know many of you would agree that it's our duty to care for our animals, so we're asking for you to make this a reality by bringing about change, and I am supportive of the creation of an animal advisory committee. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Jason, I think, did you have somebody that you need to read a comment for?
I do. There was a comment that was submitted just before the meeting that has been asked to be read into the record as part of the comments. It's from Angel Martin. So I will read this from Angel. Obviously, my name is not Angel. "My name is Angel Martin, and I live in Marvin. I'm writing the Board of County Commissioners because I wanted to say thank you for all your hard work. Union County is better off with slow, smart, thoughtful growth, and your policies reflect this. I'm grateful that this county commission listened to Marvin residents and voted no to the pump station in the Marvin Heritage District. You understand much better than our local elected officials that we don't have the infrastructure in place to support high-density residential and commercial zoning that allows for things like a 15,000-square-foot grocery store. Our schools are already over capacity, and our roads have problems handling the traffic we currently have. Slow, steady, thoughtful growth is appreciated. I also want you to know that many Marvin residents were upset with the resolution of the Village of Marvin Council just unanimously passed, asking the General Assembly to take over management of wastewater treatment facilities in Union County. Given the fact that this board has only been in office for five months, we should allow you to work your plan. Our state legislators have many other things to focus on that are better uses of their time. Keep up the great work. Angel Martin."
Do we have anybody else that got here late or didn't sign up to speak that would like to speak real quick? Okay, come up, please. Say your name and where you live.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Jill Janes. I'm a resident of Marvin. Been in Union County for about 20 years. Fifty-six thousand three hundred and fourteen, fifty-four thousand four hundred and eleven, fifty-four thousand two hundred and eighty-nine. These were the vote totals for Commissioners Brian Helms, Melissa Merrill, and Stoney Rushing, respectively, that were cast in November 2022. All told, 165,014 votes out of about 250 residents were cast for these three Commissioners, running on the platform of managing future growth in Union County. This commission set about work quickly these past five months to begin oversight in earnest of infrastructure needs and restoring balance to the cost to Union County taxpayers and ratepayers. I have witnessed in meetings much deliberation, study findings presented, and tough decisions made that laid the groundwork in their commitment to Union County voters. Now, an unprecedented effort is being launched by mayors of towns in Western Union County that undermines and voids the will of Union County voters. Resolutions have been passed to ask the state to step in and create a board to manage water and sewer moving forward in Union County. These resolutions are asserted by mayors of the very municipalities that have allowed unfettered rezoning and permitting without a thought to the impact on each other or the county at large. The reaction of these mayors and councils of Waxaw, Marvin, and others are tantamount to a temper tantrum waged on the behalf of developers. The hubris in this resolution to ask the state to direct a new board comprised of municipal members to manage water and sewer forward is laughable and puts the fox in the henhouse. I have a message for those mayors, the county, and the state. We elected a Board of County Commissioners, and they are empowered to manage this county-owned utility. Frankly, the voters have made it clear that they trust them to make the decisions moving forward. State Assembly members would be wise to measure the temperature of Union County voters on this issue before considering an affirmative response to these resolutions. As for the municipality leadership, municipal elections occur this year in the fall, and we will be ready for them. Thank you.
Thank you. Very quickly, before we finish, Sheriff Kathy's here. Sheriff, would you mind, there's some, you know, some statements that have been made tonight about animal services, and you put that out, but I want the folks that are here in attendance to understand a little bit about what's been happening at the animal shelter.
To address the closing of the shelter, it was probably our fault that we worded the message wrong. We should have said temporary sections of the shelter will be temporarily closed due to painting. You know, we painted that shelter about a year ago, and it started flaking off. We had to call in and do it again, and what happened was the paint that was used then was the incorrect paint. I mean, that's not the county's fault. I think they probably used the paint that he was given and painted it, but it was wrong. And it was flaking off, the animals were eating the paint, and so we had to use a special process to sand the walls and to do the proper applying of the paint and residue and primer. So it was, it took us a little bit to do that. We met again with the county facility. By the way, the county facility is doing a good job with their operation, Patrick and Chris, the building and the animal shelter. But we met today with the animals facility again. They are now saying that we can use a different process that doesn't have to cure but about three days, and now we'll be able to open the shelter back up, I'll accept five kennels. We'll close those five kennels down, and then we'll do the next five, and the next five till we get it done and get it done correctly. They're working hard. You know, I want to be careful when I say it's a Facebook problem, and it is. It goes wild on Facebook when somebody says something about animals, and it'd been a whole lot simpler if somebody had just picked up the phone and called and said, "What's going on?" But I will say, it was our fault that we didn't communicate the message correctly, and we stand to get a lot of the Facebook on ourself this time, and I accept that.
Now, the veterinarian that's there, Jeff Rowley, he does spaying and neutering?
He does.
And the problem might be that the animal's not old enough to be spayed or neutered, or what's the problem?
Well, there's a certain poundage. It's not, it's not so much age as it is size and poundage. Now, I'm not talking about, he don't, he don't spay or neuter small puppies, but it's poundage. But he does, he's doing all he can do in there. You've got the Humane Society's got the Low Cost Spay-Neuter here in the county. Out on Franklin Street now, it's open. I'm sure they're doing big business. I have toured it. It's a nice facility. We work well together. We work well with all these rescues, too, by the way, that's here tonight. We're not, we're not on opposite sides. They've got things that they want to see happen, and some of the things that I probably don't agree with, but that's all right. That's just part of the process.
And you're enforcing the ordinances in the towns?
We're enforcing the ordinances. We're, well, now, wait a minute. Now, when you say towns, you've got leash laws that we don't, we don't have enough personnel to enforce leash laws in the whole facility, but Monroe's got their own animal people. Waxaw's got their own animal people. There's ordinances, but it's not a leash law. We don't have enough people to enforce leash laws.
Is that a hiring problem or?
It's not a hiring problem. It's, we don't have the people. I mean, it's a, we've not tried to hire more. We've not asked for more people.
Like the school resource officers, where we're trying to find resource officers for the schools?
Well, that's a hiring problem, but it's a, it's not, that's two different problems.
Right.
But, and I will say this, North Carolina, somebody filed a complaint with the North Carolina State. They came today to look at our shelter, spent about 10 minutes, told us we had the authority to shut down any portion of that shelter we needed to shut down, that what we were doing was the way it should have been done. They told us they appreciated the job they're doing in that shelter, packed their stuff up, and went back to Raleigh.
Thanks, Sheriff. Oh, you have any?
I do have a question. So a few meetings ago, we were dealing with a noise ordinance, and we had asked the sheriff's department to review an outdated ordinance for noise and come back to us at a later date with recommendations. Would that be proper to, for the sheriff's department to revisit the animal ordinance? Or does that not work because the municipalities have their own ordinances?
Well, you're talking about passing ordinances in the eastern part of Union County. You're not talking about passing ordinance in the western part of Union County.
So this wouldn't affect Indian Trails, Stallings?
Wouldn't affect Indian Trails, Stallings?
It'd affect New Salem?
Lake Park. It'll affect New Salem, Marshville. But Marshville's got an ordinance by the way.
Well, see, we have a neighbor that has two dogs, huge dogs, that protect their goat herd from coyotes and other animals that might get into their goat herd, and it would be hard to tell them that they have to put them on a leash or do something with them. And they're in the road sometimes, but they stay with the goats most of the time. So there's some agricultural services for those dogs, that those dogs actually are working dogs. They perform, so that might be a little bit more difficult in eastern Union County than it would be in the municipalities in the west.
Well, the municipalities have the authority to create their own ordinances to deal with whatever issues they feel they need to deal with.
Anybody that spoke tonight live in unincorporated Union County, not in a municipality? Okay, where do you, you live?
I live in Marshville.
Outside town?
Yep.
So going back to my question, the county ordinance, has that not been visited in 26 years, and who would we direct to revisit a 26-year-old ordinance?
Sure. It's been some time. I couldn't tell you the exact time it's been evaluated, but it's been some time since we've looked at that. Honestly, I would say it would probably be the management team would determine with the staff, with the sheriff's office, who the best person is to actually do that research. And if you're okay with the board directing us to do that, we'd be happy to do that, absolutely.
Did we hire a veterinarian assistant last year?
No.
Did we budget for one?
We budgeted for one.
So we budgeted for veterinarian and veterinarian assistant. I know the veterinarian was about $161,000.
He needs a raise.
Do what? Well, that would be about $1,610 spay-neuter clinic visits. $1,610, yeah. So, you know, if we, if we haven't found a veterinarian assistant, is there the ability to use that money to offset this like they're asking at the Low Cost Spay-Neuter Clinic?
Well, you got, hey, yeah.
Here's what I would suggest, I'd say. We've heard some concerns. If the board is okay with this, let the management team work with the sheriff's office in coming up with some strategies and bringing that back to the board for you to consider. Obviously, the sheriff has concerns about staffing and resources, and we have the same as well. And then you can decide whether you feel this appropriate to move forward. The sheriff makes a very good point. Municipalities in this county have the authority to develop ordinances and enforce them, and it is not the county's responsibility to do their jobs for them. So at some point in time, these municipalities have to step up and do their own part. We can't be all to everyone, but certainly we can look at what we control and what we can do and bring back some suggested changes for that.
And Sheriff, right now, you're not able to even enforce the ordinances in the towns, right? Because there's not enough manpower?
Well, we don't enforce a lot of ordinances there. Marshall enforces their own leash law, and if they pick up an animal, we go pick up the animal. Stallings has their own. Waxaw has their own animal services. Indian Trails got their own leash law and ordinance in Indian Trail. So they do what they want to do, what they feel like they can, but we don't try to enforce a lot of their ordinances because they don't have many. The county don't have many. We enforce state law here in this county, and so there's not a lot of, lot of ordinances there. It's few.
And Sheriff, I apologize for calling you up, but I think everybody needs to kind of hear that this, we're lucky that you, many years ago, agreed to take over animal services and to put some enforcement teeth behind animal services. So thank you for stepping up to that.
We do the things that we're allowed to do by state law, and that's what we do. But to be fair with these people, we've taken in the last six months about 1,700 animals. I mean, it's a big deal.
Okeechobee has a good program they call Okeacats, where we adopted a cat from Okeecode.
You want a cat?
When they get on the.
My understanding, you want a cat.
I've adopted some from you, too. I've adopted puppies and cats from you, too, so don't complain. But Okeecode, they catch the cats, they clip their ears, they neuter or spay them with veterinarian students from NC State, and then they turn them back loose if they can't adopt them out.
Is that a feral cat program, which is against the law in the state of North Carolina?
Yeah, feral cat program. But if you're, if you're on an island, if you're on an island, if you're on an island where the cats can't leave other than swim, and they're not going to swim across the ocean, they gotta do something. And we have directed the veterinarian to try to develop, he says he is developing a program to do some clinics. So some of those things that y'all are already asking for have been discussed. Michelle Lancaster had that. Who took that over? Patrick, he looks like you, a child, good for you.
Patrick looks like an animal.
It's kind of by committee at the moment, but we can, we can certainly communicate what Jeff is working on.
Thank you, thank you. And thank all y'all for coming to speak tonight.
Mr. Chairman, will we need a motion to direct staff? Okay.
I would like to, in closing, I just want to thank our facility staff and Sheriff Kathy at the animal shelter. We heard a lot tonight about animal care and animal rights, and I just want to commend our staff and our sheriff's department for making the tough decision to remove the animals so that they wouldn't continue eating paint chips and having to smell those very high paint fumes. I think it was a very wise decision, and maybe not a popular one, or maybe a miscommunication somehow, but I just want to thank you for being proactive and making sure that the kennels are safe to take in animals. So thank you.
Yes. All right. Next, we have a public hearing for rezoning case CZ2022-001. Rocha, you have this one?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, manager Matthews. This is a rezoning case that is a conditional rezoning, meaning that there is a site plan and a list of uses associated with it. Applicant is requested rezone a portion of a parcel, it's a larger 20-acre parcel, this is a little more than six, for an existing business for landscaping, septic, and outdoor recreation construction. The request is for light industrial with conditions. The conditions are listed below. There's a site plan that I'll bring up along with the development standards, septic system that would be required as a part of the commercial buildings, that the buildings would meet the building code. This is the site plan associated with it. There's the existing house on the north side. This is US 601. Existing business is located here. Does include some future areas for outdoor storage associated with the business. Two buildings located here and here. Existing conditions, you can see the site in the lower right corner with the two buildings. Across the street is agricultural uses. To the north is the house. To the south, you can see 601 towards South Carolina. The portion is the tan area, would be subdivided out as a part of this. Environmental features, it's largely cleared pasture land, there's no streams or wetlands or floodplain on the site. The overall area is zoned pretty consistently, RA 40. To the north, approximately a mile, is Monroe. In terms of transportation, there's no required improvements as a part of this site. You'll see the designation for four lane with a paved shoulder for 601 stops at essentially the edge of the site. That's because, that's the edge of the Charlotte Regional Transportation Planning Organization Study Area, so that's the end of their recommendations for the road network in the area, but there's no funded improvements in the vicinity, and none are planned as a part of this project. Land use plan, you see this hatched area, this is an employment corridor, it's really an overlay. The underlying recommendation is for rural residential, but where it's appropriate for industrial. industrial or employment uses, this overlay corridor applies. Schools were not contacted because it's not a residential development. Union County Water was contacted, does not have access to water or sewer, it would be served by well and septic. Public feedback, there was a community meeting held earlier this year, two attendees, we've since received one additional comment, concerned about the industrial uses that were already occurring on the site. Municipal feedback was not solicited because it's not near the city of Monroe. In terms of planning board and staff recommendations, we'll note that it is an industrial use near a residential area, but I'll also note that this is going to be a comment you're going to hear up and down the 601 corridor if rezonings were to occur consistent with the land use plan. And the positives are that it is consistent with the land use plan and that it meets the development standards. So the planning board noted that it is consistent with the comprehensive plan, so that was their justification for recommending approval, and staff likewise recommended approval. So I'm available to answer any questions. The applicant and their attorney is here as well to answer any questions or provide additional information. Otherwise, the request is to conduct a public hearing for this rezoning.
Does anyone have a question?
Bjorn, just maybe for clarification here. So this current parcel was in violation of current zoning requirements?
That is correct.
And so this request would be to correct that and to bring this business into compliance?
That is correct. There is a zoning violation for the case or for the property. That violation still exists, but that doesn't eliminate their opportunity to apply for rezoning, and that's what they're doing here.
Is the applicant here?
They are.
The applicant might come up.
My name is Jonathan Meek. I'm from Meek Law Firm. I'm representing the owners of the property, Manuel Alcatour, Carmen Villa Garcia, their son Carlos Rojo, who is here, and he is the one that is the main owner of Lago Vista, the company that would be operating there. If I may speak just briefly to this, we made this application post the violation just as was mentioned before. This particular piece of property is gone, was originally bought by Manuel Alcatour and Ms. Garcia as a large 24-acre tract. Since then, with their own children, they've gone to build additional buildings on this property for various uses since 2017 when they first owned it. The way that this would land in front of the Board of Commissioners is that there was a violation and it caused them to map it this way or try to do this. I think what's happened, and I've got various plat maps that I could show you, the plat maps that have been done on this property since about, since starting in about 2018 or 19, are different versions of trying to divide this to make the use of the property appropriate, and to be quite honest with you, appropriate to the uses that were growing at the time. It started out as a residential use property. It continued, and they started the business. The business then kind of came about and was being done in other parts of the county. And now, since 2020 and thereafter, the business and its, the type of business that it is really was suited to be centralized on that property. Through this whole time, they've been making changes to the property to make sure that it conformed, and when it got through the county board that there was a violation that we needed to cure, they came to me to get an answer and hopefully get it to this point. So we are here asking for the zoning to be changed to light industrial with the conditions that you see here, to absolutely conform it to the uses that are needed here for this business. Lago Vista is a septic installation, so a lot of new septic installation that they do, and they're also a landscaping company, okay? Those two things, I can tell you are being done throughout the county, throughout Union County, pretty much. I think I could have them adjust the numbers with me a little bit, but at least 100 septic systems about a year is what their company is providing to citizens in this county, okay? It does do some work outside the county, but it's mainly right here, home right here in Union County. The same thing with the other part of the business, which is the landscaping portion of it. So as we sit right now with the site plan that you see, it is going to be used for those purposes. There will be a team of people that will be bringing on various materials and things like that are used, that are used for the landscaping business. There is going to be equipment and storage and things like that that will occur on this piece of property. Right now, currently, it is visible from 601, but the site plan and the pictures, hopefully they don't depict them very well. I have some other pictures that I've taken. If I may pass them up, I would do so, but the idea is that there will be some trees that will be planted to block all of that view from the road, that there will be other things, obviously, as a landscaping company that they can do to beautify this whole area. A lot of that has kind of been in waiting. We, it's not, I would say, 100% beautiful now, but it will be, and I think that they are going to take the efforts to make it so in a very short order if they can get this to be zoned the way that they need to in order to run their business. And I'm happy to take questions also.
I would be interested in the additional materials that you have, so if you could leave those maybe with staff, we could collect those after. Is that possible? Thank you, Patrick.
Absolutely. And just a point of reference, these are pictures that I took directly from 601 across the property, just as if I was driving by. The reason for that is because, again, not everyone here is going to be able to jump onto the property and see what's going on. This is the real thing about it affecting the community that I wanted to show, is that this is what it is right now. They have plans for the trees that are along, I'm going to miss the name of these, but they're green giants.
Yeah, green giants.
They've, how many green giants have been planted?
Approximately 200.
Approximately 200 green giants have been planted across the front. The, I don't want to call them saplings either because I'm not an arborist, but the baby trees are sitting there on the edge and starting their growth. And as they grow up in a rapid manner, what they're hoping to do is put some very nice horse fencing in columns and things like that to beautify it across the front, shielding from those activities that are going back beyond that might not be as pleasant to the eye.
And I drive by this property every day almost when I come to Monroe, and I rented a similar property down the road that was commercial, a little small portion. Looks like a farm to me, almost, almost like a farm operation, so it's not out of character with the surrounding area.
And with the site plan that you see here, many of the things, because of the way this has evolved, are already currently there. Basically, what you see is what is already there. It's not going to be a major change that occurs afterwards. There are some additional marked spaces for outdoor storage and things like that, but those things were already sort of happening as they are and in the capacities that they are. Obviously, this is an opportunity for them to centralize their business into one location, but it's really not going to change the current active use.
Okay. We don't have anyone signed up to speak against. Did we miss anybody? Okay, so no one signed up to speak out against. We can add this to our agenda to vote on tonight, correct?
There's no opposition.
Yeah, we have no opposition, so we can add that. If we need some language to add that to the agenda, please let me know. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anything else you have more? Okay, with that, the public hearing is closed. And next, we have another public hearing on text amendment, TXT 2023-001. Lee?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, as you stated, Mr. Chairman, this is text amendment, TXT 001, land use board. And some background on this, the Board of Commissioners directed us to work on an amendment to the development ordinance to consolidate the planning board and the board of adjustment into a single board. The amendment, as drafted, creates a land use board as the planning board, which also has the duties of a board of adjustment. Of course, as part of any map or text amendment process, the planning board reviews the proposed amendments and offers a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners. Essentially, and I'm not going to go through all the various changes to the ordinance, I think it was about 23 pages of changes, and essentially, most of those were references that were made to either the planning board or the board of adjustment, where that word was stricken and replaced with land use. The crux of the amendment really renamed the planning board to the land use board, and then went and assigned the functions of the board of adjustment to that land use board. General statutes require that you have a planning board if you have zoning. You also have to have a board that considers variance requests and things like that, appeals. That's typically the board of adjustment, but that can be done, actually, by any board. Those duties can be assigned to any board in the county. So what this is doing is renaming the planning board to the land use board and assigning the functions of the board of adjustment to that land use board. Again, it makes many, as I said before, it makes many amendments to change references from either planning board or board of adjustment to the land use board, but the crux of that ordinance is just renaming and then assigning the duties of the board of adjustment. And I also wanted to point out that the adopting ordinance that kind of goes along with this, also, it advances the terms of all current members of both boards, so all those terms will expire, and then you will need to appoint new members to the new board if the amendment passes. The planning board did consider this text amendment at their April 4 meeting, and they recommended that the board deny the proposed text amendment. The vote was unanimous. Couple of concerns that the board had, one was just the different roles of the board, that one is a quasi judicial board while the other is advisory. They had some concerns about the differences in how the board can discuss cases with the general public versus a quasi judicial board generally cannot. They had some concerns over the required training and having board members go through the amount of training that it would take to bring them up to speed for serving on both boards instead of just one. And they also had some concerns about finding enough people based on the time commitment and the training needs for two separate, for people serving in two separate roles. And then a final one was they thought it was rushed and needed maybe some more time for study, given the importance of both of those boards serve. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Anybody have any questions?
I've got a question, and Lee, maybe this is better suited for counsel. Can, Jason, maybe you can chime in on this. Is there any difference in the requirements on the qualifications for these two boards as far as applicants or who would be appointed?
So no, there is no difference in the requirements. These are handed under Chapter 160D, and under 160D, there are no requirements for either board, as a matter of fact, that are imposed by statute.
Thank you, Jason.
Any other questions? We do have one signed up for comments, that is Pam Duda. Pam, you here?
I'm here.
Could you come up and...
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Pam Duda. I am a resident of Union County, but I'm in the ETJ of Monroe, so I'm kind of a stepchild. Anyway, I stand before you this evening, not only as a planning board member, but also a resident of Union County. And by no way means, and I don't mean any disrespect, on your direction or your leadership in the text amendment that has gone before us this evening. I do have three items of concerns I was hoping that you would all consider prior to making a final decision. Some of those were already presented to you, but I just wanted to go into a little bit more detail if I may. The first one, my concern was the level of research by which perhaps the Commissioners or the staff had done to understand what it meant to combine both boards. When I did my research, I found that there was one municipality, and I'm probably going to pronounce it wrong, but Tyron, North Carolina. I was just curious if there was some research that was done based on some other municipalities or counties within North Carolina that have done it, or even some neighboring states like South Carolina, Georgia, or Virginia, just to get an essence as to what the pros and cons of combining the two boards would be. So we weren't starting in Union County scratch, you know, from scratch as being a guinea pig. So that was my main concern, getting enough information. You did say that I was against this. I'm not against it. I'm not for or against.
Oh, wait a minute, I did. You put a question mark there.
Yeah, I put a question mark because I'm not sure if I'm for or against.
I think that Lee said there was a vote against it in the planning board.
Yes, yes, sir. Yes, sir, and I was part of the planning board. But the point I'm trying to make here is when I signed up to speak this evening, I put a question mark, because I wouldn't know if I'm for it or against it based on the information.
Correct.
The second one is the roles, that's already been presented as far as the confusion as to what is required. It is a volunteer position, and, you know, for someone to sign up for something like that, I know I'd think a little twice because it's kind of, for me, it's a yin and a yang. One's advisory, the other one seems like a quasi judicial, so it's kind of, you'd have to have quite a combination. And the last thing is the selection process. Just trying to, for me, it just seems unclear what the criteria would be for what the skill sets would be for these volunteers as to what's necessary from an objective standpoint, because I would be very interested in continuing to serve for Union County, but I would like to get more information. Thank you for letting me speak this evening, both from a resident standpoint, in addition to being a planning board member. And as an aside, dogs spelled backwards is God, and I hope Union County does treat their dogs as well as we do God in Union County. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So next, we have the staff recognition. We've got some people caught in the act, and good thing you don't have to go to jail.
Thank you, Chairman. Tonight, we're fortunate to be able to recognize our annual Caught in the Act Individual Award and Caught in the Act Team Award. These Caught in the Act Awards are a staff-recognized award. These are the opportunity for coworkers to recognize their fellow employee for going above and beyond in their line of duty. We award these quarterly, and at the end of the year, we pick an annual award, and that's what we're here to celebrate tonight. It is unique that both of these winners tonight come from the Behavioral Health Collaborative, our relationship with Union County Public Schools. Courtney Jones is our annual Caught in the Act Individual Award winner, and Mindy Hughley, Cielo Pelosi, and Taiyi Sion are our Team Award, and I believe we have a short video to show you, to highlight exactly what they are being recognized for tonight.
do too, about what is it you guys are doing in Union County that's a little different? And it works. And it works because of what you guys do. So thank you so much for all your work. But thank you all, on behalf of the management team, thank you for everything that you do and keep doing great work. Thank you.
So we are very, very proud of these employees, so please help me in congratulating the Caught in the Act Award winners. I think we're going to grab a couple pictures down the front.
Adoption, getting ready for consent. I need to, we need to add a couple items to the agenda, and the first one, I'd make a motion that we add, move to add consideration of a resolution calling for investigations of relevant officials to the business portion of the agenda. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
One against. Okay. Next, the Roshan rezoning. If we could also add that to the agenda. Nobody spoke against that, so if we could please add that to the agenda. Jason, do we have consistency statements with that?
I've reached out.
I've reached out on that question, and I do not have an answer yet.
May I see? Okay, thank you. And so, motion to add that to the agenda. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? None opposed. So on the consent agenda, do we have?
Just want to clarify, at the end of the business agendas, where you want to add those?
No, we're adding those to the front since we have the CIP.
Perfect, thank you very much.
Yes. Did anyone want to bore y'all with the sausage on those, the CIP? So anybody have anything that want to take off consent agenda? Anybody want to make a motion on the consent agenda?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as published.
Okay. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
None opposed. All right, let's go to our business section. First, we'll handle the resolution. We've had a lot of discussion in the last little bit about concerns over the county's financial dealings and other things that are concerned from municipalities. So I'd like to make a motion that we adopt a resolution, and, and since I am terrible right now with reading of my vision, if Commissioner Brian Hams, if you wouldn't mind reading that resolution.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I'll begin. Resolution calling for investigation of relevant officials. Whereas Union County has successfully built, owned, and operated its water and sewer utility system for over 40 years, and whereas certain municipalities have accused Union County of lack of financial responsibility and prioritization of taxpayers' best interest, and whereas Union County has responsibly planned for upgrades and maintenance of its utility system, including consideration or adoption of periodic revisions to a capital improvement plan and master plan prepared and approved by Black and Veatch, Inc., and Brown and Caldwell, Inc., professional engineering firms, and whereas Union County has responsibly considered or adopted periodic utility service rates and fees in accordance with a rate and fee study prepared and approved by Stan Tech Consulting Services Incorporated, a professional firm specializing in financial services and management, and whereas credit rating agencies have maintained Union County's water and sewer utility credit rating at a consistently high rating, or AA+ by Standard and Poor's and AA-Fitch, and a general government credit rating of AAA by all three rating agencies based upon current management of the utility and its future plans, and whereas Union County residents have expressed a desire for any expansion of water and sewer utility to be performed in a fiscally conservative and responsible manner, and whereas certain municipalities located in Union County in which Union County provides water and sewer service have been presented with opportunities to partner cooperatively with Union County in water and sewer allocation to their residents, but have repeatedly declined these opportunities to do so, and whereas a prior effort in 2002 to remove the role of the people and their right to self-governance over water and sewer utility service in Union County in favor of unelected, appointed officials quickly failed, and whereas a new effort to remove the role of the people and their right to self-governance over water and sewer utility service in favor of unelected, appointed officials calls into question the interests behind such efforts, and whereas the confidence of the people and its government officials is paramount, predicated upon transparency and a freedom from potential conflicts of interest. Now therefore be resolved by the Union County Board of Commissioners that Union County hereby requests the assistance of state and federal authorities to conduct an investigation into the potential property ownership interests, business interests, and personal conflict, conflicts, if any, of current and past relevant officials of Union County and certain municipalities located in Union County related to the acquisition of property for, the expansion of, or usage of wastewater capacity at Union County's 12 Mile Creek wastewater treatment facility, and the future potential wastewater treatment facility to be located at 3124 Ridge Road, Indian Trail, North Carolina, otherwise known as Site B, adopted this first day of May 2023.
Okay, the reason, the reason I wanted this resolution is the resolutions that have recently been passed by some municipalities, and I will say thank you to the municipalities who did not sign up for this. We have been and continue to be planning and proceeding forward with items, just like we talked about with the Site B plan. We do not to this date have a discharge permit for that plant. It is zero. We cannot discharge anything there, and we hope to hear something soon, but until now, we still don't have any discharge permit. So there's been some serious allegations leveled by some of the municipalities who want their sewer right now rather than right. And that's what we intend to do, is what's right, not right now. And so we're moving forward. We're moving forward with proper funding. We're moving forward looking for funding sources. We intend on putting a timeline together to give to these municipalities and to the state legislature to show them what our plans are. We have given them tentative example doing general obligation bonds and putting it for a vote of all the people of Union County, not three, not 10, or not unelected people in Union County. So with this, we are asking that we, as long as, as well as other people associated with county and municipal governments, be investigated. I'm calling for an investigation of anything that I might have to do with it, which I don't. So we are going to call in and ask for help with somebody who can access financial records that we can't, and we want the people of Union County to be assured that the people that are making the decisions, that are hundreds of millions of dollars, over $1.3 billion worth of projects in public works alone right now. What in the schools like to have $1.3 billion worth of school money? So we're going to make sure that we, as well as the people that advise us, as well as the people that are working with these municipalities, are checked and made sure that we're all making the best decisions for you, not the best decisions for campaign contributions, and not the best decisions for people that they may have any kind of interest with. Any, any discussion on the motion?
Mr. Chair, I plan on supporting this motion. I have been extremely disheartened being a new member to this board and only being 33% into the presentations from Brown and Caldwell own water and sewer for Union County. The last master plan was updated in 2016, yet this resolution that has been passed by Marvin Weddington and Waxall would have us follow a 2011 or 2016 master plan when, when we've only received 33% update from our consultant so that we can figure out responsibly what we do need to do. So I'm disappointed that they could not wait for the other 66% of the information, and then reaching out to our senators or legislators to enact a local bill so that they could, you know, take utilities away from Union County was extremely disappointing. And I too echo how proud I am of the municipalities that did not join them, so that we can complete this information from our consultants. Tonight, I believe we're going to hear about pipes and the status, get that status update, and then I think on May 15th or 17th, we're going to get the next phase of this master plan update and start talking about capital. April 17th, we received the first round of information and their recommendations on all of our plants. So to have these resolutions usurp our authority when we are diligently working to listen to the consultants and find out where are we, where do we want to be, where do we need to be, what do we need to do? Again, just extremely disappointed that those municipalities would even call a meeting at 8 o'clock this morning as opposed to coming here tonight to receive more information and then making their decision tomorrow. So I will be supporting this resolution.
Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I will be voting against this resolution. This is the first I've seen this resolution. This is the first I've heard of it. Unfortunately, this is, the modus operandi of this current board majority is to keep things close among the three of them and not share with other board members. Unfortunately, I see this also as just kind of the threatening bully tactics that we've seen time and time again, just in the short tenure already of this board. This board voted to investigate a decent and wonderful former county manager and human being, and now they're calling for state and federal officials to investigate local public officials who already have, most of them, certainly those who are currently serving, already have disclosure obligations. Anybody that sits up here or sits in a municipal town hall and has taken the oath of office, they have disclosure obligations. They have to, they have to disclose what property interests and what investment interests, and in some cases, personal property that they have. So this is just, you know, this is a whole, but a whole lot of nothing. But it is a bully tactic, and it's more threatening language from this board that is profoundly unhelpful. You may not like what other municipal leaders are saying, but guess what? They've been elected too, and they have a right to enter the public arena and share their thoughts, make their concerns known, and pass whatever resolutions they wish to pass. We can pass resolutions too, but this is just, this is profoundly unhelpful, and I'm just, I'm aghast that here we are contemplating and, and I imagine about to pass this monstrosity.
I would like to add that the only bullying tactics I've seen were from the three municipalities that passed their resolution.
Commissioner Hams, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I'll just say this, that, you know, I've watched some of these municipal meetings. I've been in attendance in some of these municipal meetings as well. To say that I've been discouraged from what I've seen is sort of an understatement. I will say that I've watched our county staff, as well as our chairman, attend one of those meetings, and I've watched as these municipal folks here acted with abandon, and, and if we're talking about bullying tactics, then you should probably go back and see some of those meetings, because I was kind of shocked, honestly, to see, you know, where it was that they stood and, and how there was a complete and total lack of disregard over the effort that this board has made to try to be responsible with taxpayer funds. So I'll be supporting the motion. I believe that this is something that would be a step in the right direction for a resolution, and, and yes, it does have my support.
Thank you. And I'll say this, we had a meeting this morning that lasted till maybe 10 o'clock, and then another meeting with the town of Marvin till maybe 12 o'clock, Commissioner Brian Hams and I. We were asked by Senator Todd Johnson to meet with them, the mayors or town councilmen, whoever could come from the towns. We had a long discussion with them about what our plans are and how we're moving forward, and our consultants that are coming to us and what they're telling us. And we explained to them what the plan is. We laid out some rough timelines, and we don't have the money, so we have to make choices, just like the jail that you heard about earlier on tonight. We have to make some choices. And in that discussion, it came up again that, you know, are we being physically responsible and questioning the integrity of this board as to what we're doing? So we want to know if the state, if the SBI, the FBI, whoever, has trouble with anything that we've done, anything illegal or unethical or something that we shouldn't have done has been discharged and discussed by some of these towns. So the first time that this was done was, I well remember it, and thank goodness, former Senator Fern Schubert, she keeps good records, and she had the letter where she walked into, at the time, House Member Bobby Harold Barbie's office, and a local politician who had just been defeated in Union County for his commissioner's seat by three commissioners saying they were going to try to manage growth, was up in Raleigh in a house member's office when Fern Schubert walked in, and they were discussing taking away sewer from the county commissioners elected, saying that they were going to try to get some handle on growth. And they gave it, they were going to give it over to Governor Easley to appoint a board for Union County, who is a mostly Republican county. The Democrat governor at the time was going to appoint those members to that board. Now, at that time, it was able to be defeated thanks to the efforts of Senator Schubert. She had just been elected as senator. She was coming from the House, and thank goodness she stopped that. Now, 20 years later, we have three commissioners that got elected campaigning in two elections on managing the growth in Union County and making sure that you, the ratepayers, did not have to bear the burden for new homeowners and traffic that's coming and new schools and all the other things. So we increased, and we directed the staff that we were willing to increase our system development fee for sewer 53% at a meeting, our last county commissioner meeting. So we're pushing the burden from the homes that are here now to the homes that are going to be here in the future, which that's where it belongs, just as if you were putting in a septic tank or a well, that's where it belongs. And this is going to generate some funds to help upsize the 12 Mile Creek. In 2026, we could possibly be looking at a general obligation bond if we even get a permit to do Site B. But until we get a permit, we don't even know what to ask for, and we don't have the permits, and we don't have the environmental studies, and we explained this to the, to the councils this morning, that this needed to be done. A lot of them were surprised. They, they thought we had the discharge permit. They thought we had things that we didn't have. We had one, one town who has 1.5 million gallons available to them today that we have no control over. They can do whatever they want. They can condemn properties, they can do what they want. But they didn't understand that, and they didn't also seem to understand that another town east of them wanted to take away some of that capacity. That's what they were advocating for, is we want some of your pie until we can get a new pie. And that, I think that hit home with that municipality. I think I saw some questions going around. We heard about pump stations. When we build pump stations, this board, all, I think unanimously on the last board, we supported the pump station policy, and this board supported that pump station policy unanimously to not build some pump stations, and those pump stations allow for people to get around the people who are waiting with gravity sewer lines. So why do those get approved by the staff? And that's the question we had last year, so we made a new policy, and, and thank goodness, you know, Commissioner Williams was very supportive of that, and I thank you, Commissioner Williams, for supporting that. That's important. But now we're in a case where on paper, we have capacity eaten up at the 12 Mile Creek, on paper. Meanwhile, we're only using approximately 6 million gallons a day of a 7.5 million gallon plant. That leaves 5,300-plus homes and businesses that can be built. That leaves 5,300-plus homes and businesses that can be built. We're not dead in construction. We're just dead in new properties coming in right now. We're holding up till we get the capacity. On that, on those news stories back then, you can't read this from where you're at, but it says, "State eyes another sewage spill." This is waste, time after time, spilling out of manholes into the 12 Mile Creek and in that basin. And myself, I went to DQ, I think that's what they called it back then, that's DEQ, and asked them, "What's going on?" They said, "You've overpermitted your plant. We can't get the numbers from that staff 20 years ago." And now, thank goodness, our staff has been very good about getting those numbers and handling that, and we have a handle on it. So where they had 11 million gallons permitted and pending on a 2.5 million gallon plant. And all the people came to the bank and asked for their money, and they couldn't get it. So we get sewage spilling out of the manholes into the creeks. I called DQ last week. They said, "Don't plan to fail. Don't plan to fail." And that's what we're doing, is we're not planning to fail. We're planning within resources that we have, just like the jail, just like the schools. We plan with the resources that we have. And this is where it all starts, is sewer and water capacity issues. Sewer allows for high-density growth. Sewer allows for land that's undevelopable to become developable. Pump stations allow for land that is undevelopable to become developable. So we have a pump station policy now, thanks to the pass board, thanks to this board. And one of the, one of the two, two of the two complaints that we got were from towns that want pump stations. They just don't make sense. And both boards, the last board and this board, have told those municipalities, "We're not willing to approve those pump stations until we get a hold on what's going on." We don't want to put people in line. We don't want to let them break line. That's the best way of putting it. And one of the municipalities has a gravity solution that we believe, and we've told them that. They just don't want to do it because they're going to have to condemn properties to get there. And we've explained to them. Thank goodness, the towns, again, listened this morning, and we had an excellent meeting. But there was still some questions in there of the sincerity and honesty this board and other boards. And we have questions too, and we just want those questions answered. And you as citizens should want those questions answered. So this resolution came from a meeting that ended at basically 12 o'clock today, 10 o'clock for some people, including Todd Johnson, Mark Brody, the county, me and Commissioner Brian Helms at Todd Johnson's request. The staff was there, the county manager, the county attorney, and Lynn West was there to take the minutes. This is not being hidden. This is just, we've got to, we have to answer to these allegations put forth by these towns. So I'm going to be supporting the motion too. And if there's any other comments, any other questions? Okay. All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye. Any opposed?
No.
Okay. Motion passes. Next, we have the Roshan rezoning. Oh, did you?
No. Go ahead.
Yeah, you want to jump up there? Any, I'll make the motion that we do the rezoning, do the consistency, where's the consistency? I move that we adopt the ordinance. No, was it? That it? I move that we adopt, to approve the amendment for the proposal consistent with the current plan, adopt the ordinance, approved, approving revision of the official zoning map of Union County, North Carolina, and adopt the consistency statement and reasonableness statement for approval. Any discussion?
I'll just say, you know, I've raised the question about the prior violation during the hearing. I appreciate the fact that you submitted those documents. That gave me a better understanding of what was going on at that property. I will be supporting the motion tonight. So, thank you.
Thank you. And Commissioner Williams, you have any comments?
No comments. I support the...
Yeah, and I do as well. We have very long tried to get more commercial, industrial to residential. This is a project that is, it looks like the rest of the area. There are farm garages, there are things, I thought it was a farm garage riding down the road until it started getting a little bit bigger. We have some studies being done right now, and one that, you know, we show where about 90% is coming from, our tax base is coming from residential. That's, you know, this is a project that's industrial, it's in conjunction with the area, so I will be supporting it as well. So I made the motion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. All right. Next, we have the wastewater pump station approval request for Oakwood Development.
Good evening, board members. Thank you again. As the chairman indicated before, you have previously adopted a pump station policy. That policy requires that a developer or property owner that is considering the use of a pump station has to go through a process of doing a study, evaluating alternatives, whether that be the actual pump station and a potential gravity solution. That's then provided to the staff. Staff does an analysis. They look at that and make sure that all the information is submitted. And then we bring this to the board for your consideration. The developer applicant is here. I think they do want to speak to this, and I'll certainly defer to them in just a few minutes. But I want to go over the particulars of the request. So it is called the Oakwood Pump Station. Just to give you some background here, this is specifically for a development on the property as shown, it's outlined here. It is a proposed pump station replacement. This is a little bit different in that this is not an additional pump station to what we have in our system. This would be replacing an existing pump station. So we take one that is currently online, we would decommission that pump station, and then there would be a new pump station built that would serve this property as well as the property that was previously being served by the other pump station. And so if you see here, this is the existing pump station. It's called Suburban Estates Number Two. The proposed pump station is here. This flow here would then actually would come to the actual property. It would actually come back to the road frontage here and discharge into our system. There's a gravity solution right here, which is actually connecting the gravity. So essentially, it's pumping everything to this location. That does a couple of things. That takes flow off of this system here, and I'll show a bigger map. But it also decommissions a pump station that is currently a little bit older. So the larger area, just to show you how this affects future development, you've got a proposed development, which is a mix of residential uses, and I'll let the developer talk about that in more detail. But you've got an additional potential of 95 acres there that can be served, for a total of 157 acres. So you have the existing suburban estate, 17 acres. You have 45 acres, which makes up the Oakwood Development. And then you have 95 acres, which makes up this area here, which all is served in the sewer shed here. This is the existing area served by Suburban Estates Pump Station Two. Currently, the way this works is this particular area pumps and comes all the way over to your Suburban Estates Number One pump station. That then goes to what's called the Helmsville Pump Station, and eventually comes all the way back around to the gravity solution. So it's actually being pumped twice. That's how that system works. You would then take this flow off of this, so it no longer would come to this pump station to the next pump station. It would actually go to the roadside and then come and get into our gravity solution. So just to make that clear.
Brian, why did it originally go from a pump station to a pump station? Why didn't it go that direction to begin with?
Why did Suburban Estates really go there? Because in my understanding is there wasn't a solution to get it to the road. That was actually, when that was built years ago, there wasn't a way to get that to that gravity solution at the road. It was a lot more expensive when Suburban Estates Number Two was put in. So that was, and that was years ago. Suburban Estates has been in effect for, gosh, I don't have the, I don't have the time, but it's been years it's been in operation.
Well, I have a hard time understanding how pumping from a pump station to a pump station to a gravity is more expensive than pumping to the gravity to begin with.
Say that again, I'm sorry.
You're saying you're pumping from a pump station to another pump station. Now, the other pump station, does it serve an area as well?
Absolutely, yes, sir.
So it serves an area?
Mm-hmm. So what you've got here, so what you've got here is this area served by this pump station. This pump station served by a larger area, which then all flows to here, which then is ultimately pumped by Force Main all the way around. So you've got a larger area that's being served by two pump stations. That's existing. That's how that works today. All of this area pumps essentially to this pump station to, and you can't see it because it's below this map, but to the Helmsville Pump Station. And again, that's current today. Whether you approve this or don't approve this, this doesn't go away. We continue to operate those pump stations, and we have to maintain and own them for perpetuity.
How long has that pump station at Suburban Estates been in existence?
Does anyone know the answer to that? I don't have that off the top of my head, honestly.
10 years, 20 years?
At a minimum, 10, and it's probably been more like 20. Suburban Estates is an old development.
Has it ever been replaced?
It's been refurbished, but it's never been replaced, to my knowledge. Now, to this particular plant here, the suburban, not plant, this particular pump station, Number Two, is planned for refurbishment in 2023, this year. So it's planned to be refurbished. And that doesn't mean that it's a significant cost. It could be a replacement of pump. It could be electrical components. It just depends on what you need to do on there. But it is planned for some maintenance activities on that particular pump station.
Whose zoning is this in?
I believe this is Indian Trail. Is that correct? So that's Indian Trail zoning.
Okay. And it's already been rezoned?
Yes, sir. The property that is to the north of this, this is the shaded area here, I don't believe there is a zoning plan for that. That is future possible development. Obviously, Indian Trail has their own land use plan. They have their own zoning categories for it. I don't have that information. This is specific to this particular project. Obviously, this can be served by that pump station if the board approves that. So it could be served if the board approves this change in the pump station.
Is anybody here from Indian Trail?
I don't believe there's anyone here from the town.
So with this, this goes to the Lower Crooked Creek, right?
It goes to the existing Crooked Creek plant.
And we have how much capacity left there?
So the current capacity of that plant is, we're, actual flows are at 800, almost 900,000 gallons. Permitted is at 1.5. So if you take everything that's permitted, add it to what the actual is, we're at 1.5 million gallons. That plant has a total capacity of 1.9 million gallons.
So how many thousand gallons, about?
That's about 300-plus thousand gallons that's available for flow. Understand, there are projects that currently are in the review cycle process. So if you were to look at Crooked Creek for that, we have four projects that are in engineering plan review currently, and they make up about 170,000 gallons. We have nine projects that are sketch planned. That means they're preliminary. They make up a little over 300,000 gallons. And then you've got three projects that are permitted. They're just waiting for their permit to be, I'm sorry, they're pending because they're waiting their permit to be issued at the state level. That's around 55,000 gallons. You add all that up together, that's a little over a half a million gallons. Now, that doesn't mean that a half a million gallons is going to be approved. Those sketch plan projects may, some of those may never come to fruition, even though we have 300 gallons, 300,000 gallons shown. A number of those projects will drop out and they won't move forward. But generally, we say probably somewhere between 70 and 80% of those projects typically move forward.
Does any of that include the hospital?
So the hospital is already, they're already accommodated for the hospital itself and the expansion of the hospital and any of those particular offices related to the hospital. Now, what is not permitted is the ancillary projects, which is retail and residential that is also shown for that site. That is not permitted. They have not submitted their plans to even go through that permitting process.
So the doctor's office?
Some of the medical offices, as well as the expansion of the actual hospital.
Any orphanages or, any orphanages or anything like that over there that we're...
Not aware of that.
Because we've had a lot of complaints that we're not supplying sewer for the hospital. So the concern is, when you show me a big area, I start thinking, well, if Indian Trail goes in there and proves apartments or quarter acre lots, we might suck up that pretty quick. So Indian Trail needs to understand, you know, if we approve this, and that opens up that whole area for development, that they may lose some of the commercial that they have if it's a footrace to see if we can get our projects that is south of here, the pipe size, because this doesn't, this is not affected by the pipe size that we're doing at the...
It is not affected by the Crooked Creek Interceptor, that is correct.
So they can flow in as much as they want to, and all those lands around there can too. So that concerns me. But, you know, we had Indian Trail in a meeting this morning, and can Indian Trail, have they already rezoned any of those properties around there?
I'm not aware of what they have or have not rezoned, other than this property here, which is part of the Oakwood Development. I'm not aware of the other properties that have been rezoned or not. And keep in mind, I want to stress that as part of the pump station process, we're responsible for evaluating the utility side of this, not the land use side of this. So just understand, when we're giving you information, it's about the utility component. The developers here, they could certainly talk about their land use plans, and I welcome that. The utility really doesn't focus on the land use side of it.
Let's ask him some questions, and if you come back up.
Absolutely. Yes, sir.
Let this plug, or who's?
Let me escape out of that so you can put your...
Okay. I'm sorry.
Where do you want to put it? Is that yours?
No, it is not mine. But this is... Mr. Chairman, I'd be glad to answer any question. I'm sorry, John Ross. Thank you for allowing me to be here. Be glad to answer any...
You were around back in 2002?
2001 to 2007, I may have been an elected official in the village of Lake Park.
It's good to see you, John.
Thank you. Good to see you. But I'd be glad to answer any immediate questions if I could, and then I've got a couple of things I'd like to share if I could. Two things that I heard.
Which one?
The PDF, which is...
That one there?
Yeah, that's the easiest one to open. Great. Thank you. Right. And some of this is going to be just a little bit repetitive. I didn't know Brian was going to be doing such a great job. I should have anticipated that. But he did a good job explaining the process that is here now. So this is a, just an overview of the project. What you see highlighted in the orange area is our project. First of all, let me stop just a moment and say, I have with me Dylan O'Connor, who is here at Mandrake Capital Partners, or the developer of the project. Charlton Pliler is representing the underlying property owners. Then we also have Mr. Ben Kosky with WK Dixon, who did all the engineering design work, took the Black and Beach Study Incorporated, and then did the design study that you all have in your packet.
Very quickly, just upfront, there is no gravity solution for this, correct?
The, no, is the real answer to your question. This image would show what potential gravity solution would be there, Mr. Chairman. This bold red line going through the center of our site, that could be a 3,500 linear foot gravity outfall. The problem with that, why that does not work, that outfall ties right into a manhole that is just north of Suburban Estates One Pump Station. If we discharge from this site to Suburban Estates One Pump Station, that pump station is overloaded. It has to be reconstructed. The Force Main from Suburban Estates One would have to be reconstructed. That ties into the Helmsville Pump Station. It would be then undersized. It would too have to be upgraded, as well as the Force Main from that one. So the gravity solution, the present day value of dollars for the gravity solution is about $6.1 million, whereas what we're proposing present day for taking our pump station, taking the Suburban Estates Two offline, that's a $2.1 million solution. That is the solution for the site.
I've got a question. Now, Mr. Matthews obviously did not know if there were any sort of plans for the remaining service area. Do you have any indication there as to what future plans may be involved?
Sure. So what I can share with you is many, many years ago, yeah, this mouse is working, so this hard corner... So this hard corner was actually zoned as a Stinson Crossing Shopping Center with a vision of a national grocery anchored shopping center to be on, I think it was about forty acres or forty-five acres. That was many years ago. Even since then, the town of Indian Trail has adopted a new future land use plan, and they've identified this whole area centered on Union Build Indian Trail and the Monroe Bypass as a Village Center overlay district. So what that means is they're looking for the center core of that district to be higher more intense uses, like commercial, like civic, like institutional, and then varying downward from there as you get further out from there. So all of this project that we are working on here, the forty-five acres, is within that Village Center overlay, and that's why we have a mix of residential and commercial elements within that development.
Anybody else have a question?
Have we looked into the school impact at all?
We have. Matter of fact, that was looked into during the rezoning. So this was approved, Town of Indian Trail, Town Council approved this site plan August the tenth of twenty-one. So it's been two, two and a half years. The final plan is actually a little less dense than what that plan created. I did speak to Mr. Brandy Dees with the Town of Indian Trail this morning. Please see the attached Union County Public School Comments and School Impact Study for the Oakwood Mixed Use Project. I will plug this in because somebody asked about Indian Trail also. Indian Trail does support this pump station request for a variety of reasons, including environmental concerns as with the existing pump station. But data that she provided, that was provided to them from Union County Public Schools, this school goes, the elementary school is literally right across the street. Sardis Elementary School currently at ninety percent rated capacity. Porter Ridge Middle at eighty-eight and Porter Ridge High at ninety-three.
When were those numbers pulled?
June sixteenth, twenty-one. Okay? And then took the liberty of going onsite to the public works enrollment data that's available on the, on the county website. Sardis Elementary has actually decreased in population by three from that year to the current year. The middle school has decreased by about forty or fifty, and the high school actually has increased just a little bit since that study year was in place.
So we, we may want to check some numbers there, because the numbers that I've got for the middle and the high show a higher capacity. So what I'm showing is approximately twelve hundred nineteen students enrolled in Porter Ridge Middle as thirteen, out of thirteen hundred twenty-six, that's approximately ninety-seven percent. And you're running about ninety-six percent, ninety-seven percent at the high school.
Okay, I'm literally just reported the numbers from the website and then what Mr. Don Ogram provided, the town, at the time this was reported.
Sure, understand.
Okay.
Thank you, John.
Great.
I have a little bit of confliction with this in that, again, this morning we were meeting with councils and mayors and, and we're trying to get a handle on our pump station policy, what we're doing. And we're telling Marvin, no, you can't have a new pump station. But there is no new pump station with this. It's, it's a replacing an existing pump station.
Right. May I elaborate on that just a bit? Because there are benefits for doing exactly what, what we are proposing. Bear with me. So again, we talked a bit about the service area and everything in that service area is within that Village Center overlay district that I just described. Benefits of approving this project, it is a net zero increase to the number of pump stations that the county has. It removes, if you approve this, it removes Suburban Estates Pump Station Two from the system. This is an aging asset that is already scheduled this year for rehabilitation work.
It doesn't remove a pump station, it removes, it replaces it, right?
It replaces. It removes that one and puts it downstream with a brand new, bigger, better, shiny, meets all current standards pump station, yes. We talked about repumping the wastewater. It actually eliminates the need. So there's roughly thirty-six thousand gallons, I think, is what I saw Mr. Matthews report, of flow that are, that is pumped from Suburban number two. This eliminates the need to pump that thirty-six thousand gallons again at Suburban Estates one and again at Helmsville Road to get it to the gravity manhole that then flows into the wastewater treatment plant, the Crooked Creek Treatment Plant. So it eliminates that double pumping, so that's certainly savings of operation and maintenance cost at those two locations. Freezes up downstream capacity. So the thirty-six thousand gallons that were being pumped, if, if this project is approved, that thirty-six thousand gallons is now available in those two existing pump stations for reuse. We talked about the additional service area, total of a hundred fifty-seven acres. And then of that service area, there is a fairly sizable amount that we anticipate would be commercial mixed use type development within that. So in summary, Mr. Chairman, we believe this is a, the most cost-effective alternative for the developer and for the county long-term with the benefits that we've outlined. The gravity alternative, again, at six plus million dollars is not a viable or practical alternative. We hope that you indeed will see it that way, and we would appreciate your support in approving this pump station. I'd certainly be glad to answer any questions.
Any other questions from? Ryan?
Yes, sir. John, let me give this back to you.
So again, back to, I know this is not part of this, but it is. The capacity that we have, we have capacities for those things that we're currently, the projects that we're currently doing, the interceptor line that we're spending approximately fifteen million dollars on. It's not going to negate any gain that we get there by doing this, correct?
I'm not sure I understand.
So, so if we're upsizing those pipes in order that Stallings and Indian Trail can access those for commercial and projects already pending in those towns. If this goes in and a bunch of others jump in, because it's easier for the commercial, it's easier for the residential to get in before the commercial. Are we risking that investment of fifteen million dollars that this will take up capacity in our Lower Crooked Creek plant?
So it's a good question. So projects that are at the point that they could be approved but are waiting for the interceptor to be constructed, it does not affect those or they have no effect because they are literally already, they're, they're sort of accounted for. What is not accounted for are future projects that could be built and connected to the interceptor. So future projects obviously could be impacted by flow that comes from anywhere in the basin. Whether it's this project or any other project, it would take away from the capacity at Crooked Creek and limit the amount of properties that you could serve by the interceptor.
And Indian Trail has control of all this around it. Is there any other municipalities that have control over the area?
I, I believe it is mostly in Indian Trail. There could be some Stallings that is part of that area. Don't quote me on that. I haven't evaluated the exact amount of zoning control that's in that area.
I think it's all Indian Trail.
I think you're right, but I'm, I'm not positive. So obviously, you know, the board has a decision to make and, and, you know, our job is to provide you with, you know, relevant information about the utility portion of this. And so there, there are some positives and there's negatives in every decision that you make. So if the board were to consider approval of this request, you've got some positives. You're removing an aging pump station that is already scheduled for rehabilitation. It is a net zero increase in the number of pump stations, and so that, that is a positive. It also redirects the wastewater flow, as, as Mr. Ross said. It actually takes pressure off of Suburban Estates one, as where as Helmsville, and puts that flow in another location. And it also provides you with the ability to serve a larger area for future customers. So those are all positives. And some of the negatives, the construction of the pump station will allow for additional connections in the Crooked Creek wastewater service area. And, and that is in an, an area that's not identified for any very near future expansions for capacity. It's a long-term possible expansion for capacity. So there's no near-term capacity expansion. So you would obviously be approving a project that could have an impact on that. And also, the gravity solution would require a lot more additional, as Ms. John pointed out, a lot more additional improvements to be able to make that project work. As the chairman pointed out and made the question, yes, any project that you approve will have an effect on other projects related to that Crooked Creek interceptor. They, they, they will by default have a impact on that interceptor. So those are the negatives that relate to this decision. And obviously, it's the board's, you know, it's, it's your authority to make the decision. I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have. And again, the developers here, if you have some questions for, for them as well.
I'm inclined to support it because of the taking off the old pump station, replacing it, doing something we're going to have to do eventually anyways, or do repairs.
Certainly.
But at the same time, you know, in our discussions with the towns this morning, you know, they, they want to know what kind of effect it's going to have. And I would like to have some discussions over until the next meeting with the town. Are there any time sensitivities to this that it has to be done tonight?
We have until October to close on the property.
Okay. So you, you have it under option and you've got your zoning?
Yes.
And now you're waiting on the sewer?
Yes, we have a concept plan that's been in for quite some time that's waiting on.
Okay, so if we waited till the, to the next May meeting, that wouldn't hurt you? So would like, I think there's maybe some other questions.
Like to defer your, your decision?
Yes, if we could do that, I think, would the rest of the board be ready for that? Or would you like to, what, what's, what's the pleasure of the board?
Yeah, I, I'll just say that I've got concerns as well. So I, my, well, I guess my chief concern is, is the impact that it would have with Crooked Creek. And we've already started down initiatives there with Crooked Creek. So I would be amenable to deferring this decision to our next meeting when we can get some more information.
Certainly. Board's pleasure.
What, what's the bedrooms of these, these, is it townhomes? How many? Come, come up to the microphone. You're going to have to get on record.
It's a mix of a single-family units. It should be three, what was it, two, three and four bedrooms?
Okay. How many four bedrooms, you think?
I can't tell you that, it's off the top of my head right now.
Because that, that's important to the capacity. If it's two-bedroom, that's half the capacity of the four-bedroom, and that's how we do our planning.
Right.
So, so we're trying to figure, you know, in this discussion that we're going to be having in the next two weeks, we're trying to do our homework. It would be good to have that information if, if it's going to be ten one-bedroom apartments, if it's going to be twenty two-bedroom apartments, if it's going to be four-bedroom houses. That would help us, because again, we're, we're walking two, two dental floss. We're walking dental floss with capacity. And, and I would be curious to know maybe if the staff may already have that, what the estimated flows for this project would be.
Was that part of the capacity?
The flows are already estimated, yes, but it's not going to necessarily be clear how many four bedrooms, three bedrooms, it's, it's a, they submitted a flow request.
Okay, and the flow request was for?
About forty-four thousand, probably.
Forty-four thousand?
That's right.
Okay, all right, so that gives us something to work with. You're okay with that? You're, you all fine with that?
Yes.
So, so make the motion to bring this back up at our next meeting to, for a vote. And time to research in between.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Oh, wait, let's vote on the booth. I see your head shaking, okay. So all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Thank you. Okay, next we have comprehensive wastewater master plan update. Let me ask this. Let's take a five-minute recess and give folks a chance to go to the restroom if they need to, and we'll start back in.
It's on the desktop.
We'll start back in, well, at eight oh five.
Eight oh five.
Eight oh five.
Yes. I can't see so good here.
I'm ready to roll.
I can't see you.
Yeah. Okay, now, before we get started back, there's some discrepancies on what we might do, or we're gonna plow through, or we're gonna put something off to the next meeting?
I think we're gonna plow through.
Okay. Just to understand, some, some of us up here are hot and some of us up here are cold. And I hadn't, and I hadn't found anybody that's just right. How does the audience feel? Anybody hot? Raise your hand. If you're hot, raise your hand.
I'm warm, but I'm on the hot seat.
If you're cold, raise your hand. If you're just right, raise your hand. If you don't care, raise your hand. If you're just numb, raise your hand.
I'm numb, I can't feel my fingertips.
Okay. Well, okay, let's go back.
All right, y'all ready to get rolling? All right, so this is the update to the water and wastewater master plan. So as mentioned earlier, last time we met, we talked about water treatment plant capacity, wastewater treatment plant capacity, and the IBT. Tonight, we're talking about pipes, pump stations, storage tanks, that good stuff. And I promise I will go along for whatever temperature discomfort everyone's having, and try to speed it up a little. So what we're gonna look at is the first three bullet items are basically review from last week, and I'll go through those pretty quickly, just an overview of the growth projections and service areas, facility assumptions, and then review of the recommended system configuration. And then we'll get to the meat of it, the water distribution capacity assessment, the wastewater collection capacity assessment, and then get on to next steps. And one thing to be, I guess, important to present tonight is we're just looking at capacity assessment as a gap assessment. We're not presenting solutions or recommendations tonight. This is just what the, what the gap in performance would be. All right, so just as a reminder, we're gonna be looking at how the system performs in the future. Those future flow projections are based off of growth projections that are consistent with the 2050 land use, uh, 2050 comprehensive plan. Where available, we also got site-specific information from the towns in developing the growth projections. This is the water distribution system service area. This just defines the boundaries of the study and the boundaries of your water system. Same thing for the wastewater collection system service area. So going, go pretty quickly through these. So facility assumptions, last week, these didn't make a big deal. This week, they are gonna make an impact on the numbers you're gonna see. So what facility assumptions means is through these analyses, these are things we assume will be built. And generally speaking, these are things that are under construction. So a couple of them, the Yadkin Water Treatment Plant and those two associated transmission mains in eight fifty-three and seven sixty-two. I will assume those will be online. And the eight fifty-three transmission main over here to the west. We are assuming that Olive Branch and Highway seventy-four booster pump stations will be offline. Both those facilities basically get water from, uh, from Anson County and bring it into your system. With the activation of Yadkin, you no longer need that service, so they won't be active in the model. Uh, the last one on here is the Indian, the new Indian Trail Tank. This is one that, just based on previous planning, we suspected you needed. We assumed it wasn't going to be built so that, kind of out of this analysis, we could tell what size was needed and what priority would be. So we'll take a look at that and a couple of slides. The blanket. All right. So on the wastewater side, planned to be online. I mentioned earlier, Crooked Creek Interceptor Phase Two, that's this, uh, the sewer coming up from the Crooked Creek Plant. West Fork Interceptor, which moves some of this flow from this area over to this branch instead of discharging down this way. Waxaw Interceptor and Pump Station Enforce Main, and Crooked Creek Water Reclamation Facility. So we're gonna assume that's gonna remain in service. We're also assuming that the proposed new, uh, treatment plant Site B is not being constructed for what we're looking at tonight. All right, so last thing, just important to point out, this was a recommendation from last time. The system configuration. What we're recommending is the areas you're showing in green will be served by the Catawba Water Treatment Plant. The area shown in blue will be served by the Yadkin. The only real change resulting from that is this little northeast area in eight fifty-three west pressure zone will move to be served by eight fifty-three east. So that's a system configuration change. If you remember, last time, that was driven by trying to balance the flows between the two plants and managing IBT. All right, so for water distribution capacity, we look at four different performance criteria. Uh, so the first one is pressures, that's system pressure. Ideally, we'd like to see forty pounds per square inch. Thirty pounds per square inch or thirty PSI is deemed acceptable. We're gonna look at the results from that. Uh, we also want to meet fire flow standards. Uh, the fire flow we're looking for is between one thousand gallons per minute and thirty-five hundred gallons per minute. Uh, that's largely driven by industry standard, and that's been consistent with what your planning has been in past master plans for fire flow. Finally, we're gonna look at, not finally, almost finally, we're gonna look at storage. So storage refers to elevated storage tanks, water, storage tanks, water towers. Storage, we're trying to accomplish two things. One is flow equalizations. The way a water system usually works is you turn the pumps on and you wanna fill up the tanks. The pumps can turn off, and the water in the tanks is what feeds the system. The reason you do that is you don't want the pumps coming on and off a lot and running for a long period of time. It saves you wear and tear on the pumps. So that's the, one of the purposes of the, of storage. The other is we wanna keep enough storage in, in the storage tanks to provide for that fire flow. The way we determine that is fire flow, usually we wanna sustain that for something like two to three hours. It depends on, uh, depends on the specific land use, but we want storage for that as well. Uh, finally, for water pump stations, we want to be able to pump what's called the maximum day demand with the largest pump out of service. That's referred to as firm pump capacity with, a pump station with the largest pump out of service, just to have some redundancy. Uh, any questions on those?
Yeah, well, just a quick question, if you don't mind. Um, the pressure seems a little bit low to me. So we've got a goal of forty PSI. It seems like it should be a little bit higher.
That's the goal, there's places in your system where it is gonna be higher than that, but forty is considered to be good service pressure. So there are certainly places that have higher pressure, though, based on geography.
So we're looking at forty as a minimum goal?
Correct.
Okay, but, but it's, yeah, because I'm thinking, you know, sixty, sixty-five, it would be, um, kinda on par with what you see na, nationally at least.
You would certainly see that in your system as well. Uh, it's, but this is the minimum we're trying to hit. And where the pressure is really depends on where you are. Elevation matters, like if you're at the top of the hill versus the bottom. But certainly sixty-five, you'd see that in your system, I would expect.
Okay, thank you.
All right, um, so let's jump first at looking at, uh, minimum pressures. So we look at minimum pressures during max day demand. That's when, would be considered a high-demand period. And we're looking at year twenty twenty-five, so this is with a little bit of growth from where we are today. To tell you what we're looking at, each point here has a different color on it. So if it's green, that's thirty to thirty-nine PSI. That's considered acceptable, but not as high as the standard we'd like to have. Yellow is twenty-nine to thirty PSI. Orange is one to nineteen, and red would be zero or possibly negative pressure. So just to give you some context of what we're looking at here, some of these are interrelated, like, so for example, Zone eight twenty-one feeds Zone eight eighty via the Providence Road Pump Station. That's this pump station right here. Many of these pressure problems are due to, we need to get a little more supply capacity on the intake of that pump station, and that will relieve a lot of these things we're seeing, pressure issues in both of those zones, just to get some context. Some of these pressure problems down here in eight fifty-three south are related to transmission main capacity here, kind of along that corridor. And finally, we are seeing some pressure problems with the conversion of that northern area. Moving that northern area into eight fifty-three east does create some pressure issues. Now, we still need to find solutions to all these, so this is just what it would be unmitigated. But this is what it would be without any additional changes. So next, what we're gonna do is we're gonna kind of jump forward in time. So as you go forward in time, growth happens, more demands come on the system. That puts more strain on the system. Uh, so what happens twenty thirty, you start seeing some of the greens go yellow, some of the yellows go orange, and gets a little more widespread, but you can see a lot of the problems are in the same areas. Same when you get to twenty thirty-five, and it gets a little worse when you get out into twenty forty. So any questions about pressures? All right, we could always come back to it. So next thing we're gonna look at is fire flows. So with fire flow, uh, remember I spoke earlier, we wanna maintain somewhere between a thousand and thirty-five hundred gallons per minute. That varies based on land use. At the same time we're providing that fire flow, we wanna maintain a minimum of twenty PSI in the system. So that's one condition where we'll let the pressure go lower, because fire flow would be kind of considered an emergency. So what you're seeing on this map is the color coding refers to the fire flow deficiency. So yellow means you're, uh, greater, less than or equal to two-hundred-and-fifty gallons per minute off the standard. So let's say that you were in a land use that the standard was thirty-five hundred gallons per minute. If it's yellow, you're getting three-thousand-two-hundred-and-fifty or somewhere a little bit more than that. So that's what the, uh, the colors mean. Orange would be between two-fifty and five-hundred off of the standard, and red would be greater than five-hundred gallons per minute off of the standard for, for whatever the given land, the land use is. So a couple of things to point out here. A lot of the red dots you see, a lot of the dots, periods you see, are not systematics. In other words, they're not related to transmission main capacity. They're location-specific, so it could be a pipe, uh, kind of a long pipe with a dead end, and you're looking at the pressure at that dead end. So it doesn't have anything to do with the transmission main getting there. It's just the local geometry of the pipeline. That's quite a few of the, of the items you see here. Some of the systematic ones are things we talked about earlier. You recall from looking at minimum pressures, we saw some minimum pressures down this line on eight fifty-three. Uh, we're also seeing some fire flow issues there. So that's kind of two issues compounding that would, would kind of tend to push you to recommend a transmission main there. And you're seeing the same thing along this chain in seven sixty-two. That's just following, uh, that transmission main down the middle of seven sixty-two. So that's a case of something that could be relieved by transmission main capacity. So just to make a difference between kind of isolated ones and transmission main-related problems. All right, so same as before, we're gonna march forward in time. So again, just as flows and demands go up, the problems get a little more severe and a little more widespread. So that's what it looks like when you get out to twenty forty. All right. Uh, so now let's look at storage. So, um, what you're seeing on this map, if you see, uh, pressure zone colored pink, that means that we're projecting a storage shortfall. If you see it colored in green, we're seeing, we think there's plenty of capacity based on the projections we've seen. So kind of going around the map, in eight fifty-three west, and recall, eight fifty-three west now excludes that piece that moved to eight fifty-three east. You currently have a storage volume of one-point-two million gallons. Uh, we think you'll need, uh, two million by twenty twenty-five, two-point-six by twenty forty. Um, and those aren't additive, you don't add two to two-point-six. It's just a total of two-point-six is what you need by twenty forty. Nine thirty-five would need point-four million gallons. Eight eighty, uh, no additional storage needed. Eight twenty-one, no additional storage needed. Eight fifty-three south would need point-two million gallons by twenty twenty-five and point-four by twenty forty. Seven sixty-two, no additional storage needed. And finally, eight fifty-three east would need, uh, point-three and point-five million gallons, respectively, twenty twenty-five and twenty thirty. All right, so let's take a look at the pump stations. So these are the water pump stations. Uh, only two look to be problematic. One of them is Highway seventy-five. Um, we're gonna recommend upgrading that pump station. Its capacity doesn't match the maximum day demand, nor does Providence Road. But Providence Road isn't meeting that capacity because of the influent piping coming into the pump station. The pump station itself is fine. It's the influent piping which we're gonna recommend some improvements. Uh, the rest of the pump stations are in good shape. Some of them are still under construction, but, uh, the only one that we would recommend taking a look at, Watkins Road Booster Pump Station. If you just look at the paper design capacity, you would say it's under capacity, but it's running fine. So it seems to be outperforming on paper what it should, so that's a good thing. So it's just something maybe, uh, to keep an eye on, but no recommended improvements for Watkins. All right, any other questions before we jump to wastewater? All right, so wastewater collection system capacity is a little simpler. Um, we look at gravity sewers and pump stations. So for a gravity sewer, uh, what we're looking for is a performance criteria. We want, if you can think of it, when a lot of flow gets in a sewer, the water level rises, just like a river, right? It can rise above the top of the pipe into the manhole. That's called surcharge. You'll see that term used, uh, later on here. Uh, what we want is, under peak flow conditions, we want that water in the manholes to come no higher than half the depth of the manhole. That's the, the standard we're setting for performance under peak flow conditions. For pump stations, we want the firm pump capacity to be, uh, greater than the peak flow. So again, firm pump capacity is the station capacity with the largest pump out of service. Um, the way we calculate peak flow is two components. You've got the normal sewer flow, the things coming from the household, and then you do have some allocation for rainfall that gets into the system. So, uh, that peak flow is determined by a synthetic rain event. It's called an SCS type-two storm. It basically simulates what a, uh, one-year, twenty-four-hour rainfall event would be. So that's the, the standard, uh, that's used there. All right. So this is the twenty twenty-five map. Uh, just as a reminder, West Fork Intercepters online, Poplin Road Flow Equalizations online, Crooked Creek Interception Phase Two is assumed to be online, and the Waxaw Interceptor Pump Station Enforce Main. So the color coding here, green, means under peak flow conditions that the water is, level's entirely staying within the pipe. It's not going above the top of the pipe. Yellow means that you're coming above the pipe, you're having a little bit of surcharge, but you're not reaching half the manhole depth. If you, if you see red, red means the surcharge is at or above half the manhole depth. So that's how we measure standards. So red would be, uh, not meeting the standard. Yellow would be kind of a warning track, but still meeting the standard. So the areas that are most noteworthy is here in West Fork.
East Fork?
East Fork, I'm sorry. I get my directions wrong all the time, so don't ask me how to get somewhere. Um, so in East Fork, a twelve-mile, um, we do have, uh, quite a bit, good reach of area here with surcharge. Um, we also have two areas of surcharge up in these northern branches. Uh, we have a little bit of surcharge on this side branch of, uh, Crooked Creek. I think this is just south of the old South Fork Pump Station, if memory serves. And then you have another small branch off of Poplin Road Pump Station, where you have some surcharge.
If, if you had to say, so that's around the St. John's Forest Airport, roundabout area? Where that red is?
I'm not sure.
Brian, you know?
I, I, I'm not sure, honestly. Couldn't, couldn't say for sure where that is.
The reason that's important is, let's say Wesley Chapel, for example, wanted to do some rezonings there. We, we need to make sure that the municipalities that are affected by that are, um, made aware of it before they consider rezonings.
All right, we're gonna go forward in time. I promise these maps are changing, but you're not gonna be able to tell. They're, they're kind of subtle, the changes you'll see. Uh, so what happens is basically, some of the yellows go to red, some of the greens go to yellow, but it's a lot more subtle than in what we saw in the water system. So that's twenty thirty, moving to twenty thirty-five and to twenty forty. Um, and the reason you're not seeing a lot of changes is because high sur- And the reason you're not seeing a lot of changes is because high surcharge conditions dampen the flow, basically. So, it's, that's why you're not seeing a lot of differences here. But that's where we are capacity-wise for the pipelines. Finally, we'll take a look at the pump station capacity. This is the wastewater pump stations. So, first up is Poplin Road. This is where new flow equalization is being constructed. Poplin Road, because it has flow equalization, doesn't really follow that performance definition of firm pump capacity to peak flow. What happens with Poplin is the big peak flow comes down to the pump station, and you send it to a tank and hold it in a tank to kind of protect the pump station from the really high peak flows. So, the pump station's not going to pump those high peak flows, it's being dampened by storage. So, the way we measure Poplin is by the performance of the tank, more so than the pump station. And so, that tank was sized for a five-year event. Based on our modeling, it's performing a little bit better than that, or should perform a little bit better than that, somewhere between a five- and ten-year storm. So, no issues with Poplin. Mill Bridge and Waxaw are in good shape, no concerns there. Fieldstone, Hunley, and Forest Park, their firm pump capacity is not greater than the peak flow, so we would, I guess, scope capacity improvements there. But one thing that we would recommend, and something that staff does as a matter of policy anyway, is to do kind of a flow study to confirm those. Those are smaller pump stations at the perimeter of the system. So, before going forward with any kind of design improvements, just do a flow study to confirm what kind of flows we're seeing in the model. And for next steps, we're taking what we showed you tonight, and we're putting together some, a draft list of capital improvements to alleviate what we've seen in the presentation tonight. So, that's it. Any questions, anything you want to drill into?
Any questions? Thank you for the presentation.
Absolutely, thank you.
And you got another one to do for us, is we're two-thirds away done?
There you go, we're sixty, we're at sixty-six percent now.
So, please municipalities, bear with us. Okay, next we have.
Continuation of the capital.
Continuation of that capital.
Yes, sir, the continuation of the capital discussion. Patrick will be talking to you about the EMS needs and the volunteer fire department air packs, and we'll continue on from there.
Thank you. A few years ago, we started what we call the SCBA Fund. And SCBA stands for Self-contained Breathing Apparatus. All fire departments have a shoulder-mounted air pack that they can go in and fight fires with. It's got a fifteen-minute supply of oxygen. It encompasses a harness, an air bottle, a face mask, and there are some additional attachments that you can outfit. These packs typically cost between eight and twelve thousand dollars, and they have a fifteen-year useful life. And you want to replace them all at the same time because they have different standards. There are two main manufacturers, MSA and Scott, that the fire departments use. And they come out with new standards every five years. So, what you don't want is different standards on different trucks. So, they try to replace them all at the same time. What the problem with that is, in some of your smaller departments, like Jackson or Griffith Road, is the replacement cost on those packs could be the same as their entire budget for the fiscal year. So, what we were seeing is potential for spikes in the tax rates, which we didn't want. So, what we created was this fund to fund the purchase of those air packs out of the county's general fund that it wouldn't impact the volunteer fire department tax district. So, what you see here is the five-year look at what we anticipate the needs for the departments that are coming up from replacement. Seventeen departments, they each come up at different times, but what you see here is those departments that are up for replacement over the next five years. I won't spend a lot of time on EMS. I showed you their capital needs back in March. You can see the majority of their need is in ambulance. They either purchase new ambulances, or they remount existing ambulances. So, you can usually remount a box where you transport a patient once on a new chassis. You replace the frame, the engine, the cab, and put the old box on it. You can do that once in the lifespan of a ambulance. And after eight years, you need to replace the whole ambulance. So, the majority of the cost is either a remount or purchase of a new ambulance in this five years. You also see some support vehicles. Those are your F-150s, your Durangos, your Suburbans for some of their community paramedics and administration staff. And then you see some technology, computers that go in the ambulances and their trucks. So, I'm not going to spend a whole lot of time on this, but if you have any questions, I can certainly answer this for you. Thank you. I think Vicki Calacut with nine-one-one is up next.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. You normally know me as the nine-one side of the house, right? And, but tonight I'm going to talk about infrastructure on our radio system. So, as part of the nine-one system, we are also maintaining the radio system or a maintenance agreement for the radio system, as well as the portable and mobile radios in the car. So, we do have a small radio shop staff, and they do a lot of installs and repairs for radios. So, three items we're asking for this year under CIP are, first, a TDMA upgrade on our main radio system. I say, we call it the public safety system, but there are also municipalities, or our own county has non-emergency services on it, so facilities or other small groups that have a need for a radio system, right? For public, not necessarily public safety, but electric, water, facilities, things like that. So, the first item is for the upgrade to that system. The second item is for a VHF paging system, and I have slides for both of those. And then the last one is for radio replacement and maintenance. And that's a small cost over several years. As you recall, or you may recall, we've been replacing radios in this county for many years, trying to get up to the latest technology, get rid of systems that were end-of-life. But what we haven't let any of the volunteer fire departments do, or really anyone else, is expand their fleet, right? We've held it to replacing what we had to replace, and it's time that we catch up with additions, and then any changes or just small parts and replacements. We do that in our radio shop to keep the costs down and make it manageable. So, that last piece I don't have a slide for, but it is an ongoing maintenance cost for those radios. So, for those who are newer, who don't have a history in the radio system here, we do have a ten-trunk radio system here in this county, right? We own and maintain our own. That system serves all of public safety and those utilities. And we are part of the URC, which is the Urban Area Security Initiative with the City of Charlotte and other municipalities and county governments. So, that allows us to pool our resources, and rather than all of us having and maintaining a master site, we share a master site in Matthews, which keeps our costs lower, right? With that in mind, the state of North Carolina maintains a radio system known as Viper. And in two thousand nineteen, they set out their intention to change the way that they are utilizing that system. They wanted to go from a frequency division multiple access channelization protocol to a time division multiple access protocol. And with that, they sent out guidelines in two thousand nineteen that says, hey, if you're going to do this, by this state, you must be here, by this state, you must be here. Well, what's the relevance to us, because we don't use Viper? Well, that's a partner, we use it throughout the state when we're working on different things and auto aid agreements. But also, as part of the URC, the main URC out of Mecklenburg County voted that same year and said, we'd like to follow the state, the same timeframe as the state Viper. That means we can all still talk with each other all the way across the state. So, that Mecklenburg County URC voted, and then subsequently, the Cabarrus URC, Stanley County URC, and our own URC here in Union voted to stay systematic with that change with the state. So, we've been doing a lot of things to get prepared for that, and this is the final, one of the final pieces for that, right? But you're like, Vicki, why would I want to do that? It costs money, I'm so glad you asked. There's a lot of things that can happen, right, with that transition. First of all, we are a ten-trunk system, right? So, we are held to ten talk paths. And with the, one of the reasons that we can't increase that talk pass is the demand for eight-hundred frequencies, right? So, we're on an eight-hundred megahertz system, and there is a very limited supply of eight-hundred megahertz, right, available to us. There was a lot of changes that took place with the cell phones in the, around two thousand and eight, where they started selling off that spectrum. So, we can't really buy, sell, or trade or find an eight-hundred frequency for us right now. So, what TDMA allows us to do is change the software. So, instead of utilizing and needing a frequency for both transmit and receive for every trunk, it allows us to take those ten we have and double down to twenty, right, without having another frequency to operate it on. So, it allows us to double our capacity on the system. It makes sure that we remain current with industry standards. We maintain that interoperability with the rest of the state and our URC partners, so we're not on an island where we can't just talk to anyone else. It required, again, some upgrades to our radios, and we've already done that. You were very generous with us the last several years. We've been able to upgrade the sheriff's office, county fire, and EMS radios. We were able to upgrade microwaves at our tower sites, and we've completed that part of the project. Again, that was a three-year project that we looked at. And then, we were able, just this April, last month, we were able to upgrade to an ethernet backhaul for our radio system. It's very important. So, we're seeing not only radio traffic that is voice, we are moving data. So, there's an AVL component where we are getting the location of that radio. So, when a nine-one call comes in, we know where the exact closest unit is, right? We can see that on our screen. So, as, as the technology changes and we're getting more and more data-heavy, we actually see that need to expand the capacity of our network. So, that's what we're trying to accomplish here with TDMA. There's a couple of other opportunities we have that we'd like to take advantage of with your permission. We'd like to look at and continue to have conversations with the schools. So, in addition to our radio, we are, our radio shop maintains the transportation bus radios for our school system. So, right now, they're on a four-hundred megahertz system. It is end-of-life. So, we've been notified in seventeen by Motorola, the life expectancy of that, and they've guaranteed us best effort on parts through twenty twenty-five. Well, best efforts is not a big guarantee, right? So, with this opportunity, rather than buying a new system for the schools, it allows us that extra capacity to move potentially three-hundred buses to the public safety system. So, instead of having four sites in the county, they have all the sites, just as public safety does, which is increases their capacity, it increases their coverage, and it's going to greatly increase the clarity of their transmissions on their radio system, right? So, we'd like to continue those discussions with your permission and look to moving the schools there as well, right? It's just a great opportunity for us. We didn't have the capacity before, this gives us the capacity. The last thing I want to talk about there is upgrading the infrastructure for our VHF paging system. So, our fire departments, not every fireman has a radio, right? That's a very big expense, and many of them rely on paging. So, our current paging system, the infrastructure, was bought in nineteen ninety-eight. We are buying parts on eBay or anywhere else we can find them, right? They're not there anymore. So, what we'd like to do is upgrade to a GTR eight-thousand, and by doing so, it allows us to utilize our already-existing microwaves on the eight-hundred system and a lot of other infrastructure. We can take advantage of that, but upgrade the hardware and make sure that we're current and that we're communicating well with our volunteer fire departments. Are there any questions? Take my lead.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is John Emilio. I'm the Director of IT. It's a pleasure to be in front of you this evening. And I'm going to talk about the technology requests for capital money over the next five or six years. So, as you see on the screen, we have front-loaded for the first two years a significant investment in technology equipment, and I'm going to go into detail on the next few slides. So, for the next, the current CIP budget, we're going to talk about cloud migration, which is essentially moving, starting the process of moving a lot of our applications from on-premise hardware equipment to cloud applications, or to cloud vendors. We're currently in the process of moving our infrastructure email, which some of you, well, actually, all of you will be impacted soon. You'll be getting requests from my team to move some of your applications to Microsoft three-sixty-five. So, part of the cloud migration is going to be that. So, the costs associated with, over the next few years, is to start porting and moving our data from onsite to various cloud applications. All right, with that, in twenty twenty-five, I'm asking for a replacement of our phone system, Monies. It's a significant spend, but our current phone system is beyond its useful life. It's a LG Ericsson system. It is, at one point, or it was domestic, but the ownership of it has gone to Asia, and a lot of our interfaces are based in Australia for some reason. And anytime we need to get things done, it costs a lot of money. There's very few vendors that support this phone system anymore. And it's actually, the phone system's kind of geared towards larger companies, like American Airlines is, uses our current phone system right now, probably a little bit more updated version. So, going forward, the replacement of our current system would be one that's more functional, more fit to our environment, and have parts and services that are easily accessible and cost-effective. All right, so, looking at our infrastructure, so the infrastructure and technology is basically your servers, your network, your switches, your routers, things like that. So, the cloud migration, I mentioned to you already, from twenty twenty-four through twenty twenty-seven, we're asking for a hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars a year to basically start gradually moving to cloud applications and the costs associated with that. The second thing there is called a storage area network. That's basically, right now, in our infrastructure, that's where all of our data is stored. Like, our current infrastructure email sits on that. Our file servers, things like that, sit basically on a storage area network. Now, as we move to the cloud, the need for the SAN will decrease, but of course, at this point, we, our current equipment is beyond useful life, and so, we're going to have to replace some of it in the next year or two as we migrate over to the cloud. The next one is called network segmentation, or on the budget, it was actually called DMZ refresh, which is basically a DMZ, or a network segmentation is basically an area on your network that you put web servers or web applications, and then you build a DMZ, for demilitarized zone, it's a military term, that basically protects your enterprise data and everything that's behind it. So, basically, that's, that's what a network segmentation enhancement is, and it's, it's really related more towards cybersecurity, which is something that is very important to us. And then, in twenty twenty-five, which is next, not this coming fiscal year, but the following, our servers, our physical servers that hold our applications will need to be refreshed as well. We have ten physical servers and a hundred-and-sixty virtual servers that are just virtually sitting on those physical servers. They'll need to be replaced, but again, as we go to the cloud, that, those amounts, this quantity of servers will decrease, and it'll be more cost-effective, and it'll reduce the footprint here in the government center of technology. So, it'll give us more mobility if, you know, in the future, you know, the government center, you know, changes, technology moves, or something like that. So, we'll have more mobility. All right, the last, last request is for pictometry, or it's also called Eagleview, and I believe Van Harrell had talked to you about this a few months ago. And this is basically refreshing or an upgrading, actually continuing, our pictometry for our GIS systems. And this is, the picture's basically on our website. These, these flights that happen, or requesting to happen every year, they take photographs, obliques which are at an angle or straight down, that provide the imaging for the GIS systems that are used by pretty much every department, more specifically in the areas of tax, emergency services, and also our taxpayers, and folks that come into our website. So, with this enhancement, the cost is actually going to go down from what we have been paying. We've, and we've been getting these aerial photographs every other year, but actually, with the newer technology and tweaking some things, we're actually going to be paying less per year to get better quality images. And the reduced, I don't know if you ever see the white space, but there's like, when you kind of zoom in and zoom out on our, our maps, you get some white space. Well, with the newer technology, that'll go away. So, it's actually, we're getting better quality imagery at less cost. And so, that is a And so that is a five-year contract that we're working with a company. It's called Eagleview. And that again feeds something called Go Maps, which is what's presented to our taxpayers on the website. And other than that, I don't have anything else to discuss. Appreciate your attention on this and your approval. Any questions? Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Okay. Bjorn? You've got billions of dollars in road money.
Well, you would think so. We, we have one million and that's the presentation. And compared to the other presentations, this money's committed. And so there's literally no change unless you choose in the future to change it by committing more money to the program. This reflects all of the $1 million that was committed by the Board of Commissioners over the last six years. I will note that it adds up to $1,250,000 because Lancaster County had a project on the border that had a traffic impact analysis, identified some impacts in Union County. You can't do much with $25,000, so they just cut us a check. We worked with the Village of Marvin and assigned it to a project in Western Union County, actually for cost overruns at Marvin and Newtown. That money's been expended. So out of $1,250,000, we have paid out 225,000. So we have a positive balance right now. I can think of two projects this year that will have money going out the door, which is to Weddington for Porcelain and Potter. That project is being designed. And for the initial design work at Bonsgrove Church and Waxaw Marvin, which was just funded a matter of months ago, which is remarkably fast and is exactly what we intended to do, which was identify a critical issue as the Waxaw Marvin Corridor acted as a reliever to Providence Road as construction and widening started on that later this decade. So we're doing exactly what we intended. I will note that we're currently in the public comment period for updating our critical intersection list. We have close to 2,000 people across the county who have responded to our online survey. It's been remarkably effective. And later this summer, the municipalities and you will receive the prioritized list of 15 intersections that we would hopefully receive endorsement of. And then a follow-on application this fall to design those projects. So this is a program that has momentum. The county provides a lot of leadership and these projects, even with just a million dollars, we've leveraged well in excess of $10 million of DOT and municipal funds to deliver projects that, that are consistent with our plans, consistent with the municipal plans, consistent with DOT plans. So it's, it has good momentum and this just reflects the accomplishments with the million dollars you have committed to date. And I'm happy, happy to answer any questions you may have about the program.
Bjorn, one thing that, that we've talked about in other meetings is, is lighting for some of the roundabouts. Is that something that's going to be presented? Can, can we, I guess, I guess what I'm asking is, is that some, is that something that we can look at bringing back to the Board of Commissioners? So that maybe we can consider something like that for some of the intersections where it may be needed the most?
Yes, sir. We, that is something that has been commented on both offline, outside of this critical intersection comment period and through the comment period. People have noted difficulty seeing roundabouts, particularly at night. You come up on them and you're like, whoa, what's going on? And as well as intersections that aren't improved. Safety is a consideration there for illuminating them. We actually spoke with the state traffic engineer, or a safety traffic engineer for the DOT. They are developing a unique spreadsheet of our intersections to show the crashes and the crashes that are at night. And they gave us some, some thresholds that they would use for prioritizing intersections that have a, a night safety issue. So yes, we're going to bring that to you. And this is in response to really a Village of Marvin example that they've done over the last couple of years to illuminate sections of Waxaw Marvin Road and Newtown Road at their, and specifically at the roundabouts. Their costs are approximately $1,000 a year to illuminate them. And, and we would be happy to bring a list of candidate locations for the, the board to consider. But again, $1,000 a year, it's, it's outside of this program because that's a capital project. Illumination is kind of an operational expense. It's something new, but it's something that has been well received and has been asked for by, by the public.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Bjorn.
Yes, sir.
And so now we would ask for any feedback that you have on the long-term plan. I know it's been about three hours ago when you first heard about the facilities portion. But we would like any feedback that you have for us tonight. So we can take this plan and go back, as I said before, and put a financing strategy together for the larger projects such as the jail and the judicial center expansion renovations and human services expansion. So if you have any feedback for us at this time, we would greatly appreciate it.
Any thoughts? All right, thank you very much.
Okay.
Jim.
So.
I just want to point out this, I appreciate the staff's work on putting this together. As you can tell, there is a lot of capital that we have to consider each and every year. And this doesn't include the capital needs from, from UCS, nor from South Piedmont. And it also does not include the capital, which will be from the utility. So this is just the general government portion of all of that that we have to evaluate and build into our funding model. So obviously you've, you've got a lot of information. If you have some thoughts later on, please don't hesitate to email me, call me, let me know. And then that way we can build that into our response ultimately for the manager's budget and for your consideration. Thank you.
One, one thought I would say is like we spoke to the sheriff earlier. You know, if you, if you double the capacity of the jail, you're doubling the sewer capacity as well. And, and we need to make sure that we can, whatever we decide. I mean, that, that location of any jail upgrade is going to be significant to the impact of the sewer. It almost has to be around Monroe to take use of the existing capacity and that capacity we have there. There's not very many places and the location near the, near the judicial center.
Right. So in the funding request for 2024 that you'll hear about next is the actual planning and design of that.
Correct.
And my understanding is they will work through that process during that time.
Well, I understand where we locate a place. We're going to have to consider sewer availability we have there.
Right, right.
And just to clarify, there, there is a plan to do the phased jail on the current site. We designed the sheriff's office expansion with that in mind. Part of the problem is you can't tear down the old jail until you build a new jail. So that's where the phasing approach comes in. You build the core services with a limited number of beds. And then in phase two, you can start tearing down the old jail as you add more beds to the, to the new facility. The money in the next, next year's fiscal budget will allow us to explore that in greater detail and also explore additional sites if we want to. You're, you're correct that sewer plays a big part in that. We can't build a facility like this where there's no sewer capacity. The, the other component that Brian mentioned when he was talking about is the funding. Coming up with $120 million in one year is very, very difficult. So that's where the phasing allows us to spread that cost out over a greater period of time. So there's some advantages with the phasing. Understand that in a perfect world, we have the money, we have a site, we built it today. We just, that's not the reality. So we, we can work through all those issues with the money that's in fiscal year 24 budget.
One thing, maybe two, is to reach out to the city of Monroe and ask them maybe for some of their capacity since they're, since they don't have a jail. Then they bring their prisoners to us and maybe partnering with us, maybe instead of taking away capacity from Wingate, we can, in that area of the county, we can partner with Monroe and getting some more sewer capacity in the jail from them.
We can certainly do that. We can reach out.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
So quickly to wrap up the capital presentation is what we are actually recommending for funding in the FY24 manager's recommended budget. I'm going to go through these rather quickly. You received a lot of information tonight from the departments for the individual requests. But for the general county facilities capital projects, we are recommending funding $6.37 million worth of projects. And those are each listed here, one being that jail expansion and design for $2 million. Judicial center and governmental center renovation phase one design for $1.28 million. The jail rooftop HVAC systems, the critical infrastructure projects that Chris Boyd actually presented earlier and the annual operating R and R money. If there's not any questions about this, I'll keep moving forward quickly through this.
Any questions?
On the public safety side, we're recommending funding $4.7 million worth of, worth of projects. You heard from Vicky and the need for the E911 structure, as well as you heard from Patrick for the union EMS needs, as well as the volunteer fire department air packs. So are any questions about these particular projects? For information technology, we are recommending the first year of funding for the cloud migration, the SAN's storage area network, as well as phase four of pictometry. If there's no questions, I'll move forward to this. And then for the other capital county needs for the NC DOT, critical infrastructure projects, adding $100,000 into that bucket of money for those. So in summary, for the general county capital, the recommended budget for 2024 is $11.8 million. As you can see, the funding sources we have identified for this, the Pago funding that is built into the base budget of the county is $3.9 million. Over prior years, we have put back some information technology money in CIP that has not been spent. There's 410,000 of reserves in that. And we are also recommending actually assigning part of our general fund, unassigned fund balance from the FY22 year-end actials of $7.4 million. If there's not any questions, I'll move forward with the rest of the presentation.
Any questions?
We have received the capital request for South Piedmont Community College. They submitted to us their request for annual capital funding for R and R that we fund to them annually for $375,000. In addition to that, their CIP request included a driving pad at their old Charlotte campus location for $6 million, for total CIP needs of $6.3 million. At this time, we are only recommending funding $375,000 for their annual R and R money. The funding difference needed, if you as a board would decide to look into funding the driving pad, we would need direction to look into additional funding sources for $6 million.
The driving pad for police officer training?
Yes, and motorcycle training. There's a different variety of things that is used for. And Michelle Brock is actually here from South Piedmont as well tonight, if you have any questions for her.
Any, any opportunity to partner with us at our progress facility? Is that, what kind of pad we got out there? Nothing? I know we've got a lot of stuff parked down there.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Patrick. I think you had something to say.
This pad, SPCC has, has discussed this with the sheriff. So it would be a multi-use facility for their truck driving school, fire department training, EMS, the sheriff's office defensive driving. So it'd be a multi-use facility. SPCC has, and Michelle, correct me if I'm wrong, requested money from the state legislator to help fund this project. And that's why we're not necessarily recommending funding it with general fund dollars at this time until we see what the state, but there, there is a need for both law enforcement and some of the, the professional services in the county for a driving facility.
The board, and this is probably new to this board, but there was a master plan for the sheriff's training facility, which included a driving pad. And in an effort to sort of combine those projects, the sheriff would be willing to obviously partner with South Piedmont for this. But that's why we're not looking for funding right now because we're hoping the state will come with some dollars for that.
Okay. Any other questions? All right, thank you.
In addition to that, they also requested funding for phase one campus improvements, building a restrooms and the HVAC controls in the Brazel Building. At your April 3 meeting, we actually came and appropriated these projects with bond premiums that we had on hand and their investment earnings from their bonds. So we were able to take care of those needs except for $123,000. But they are able to move forward with those projects now with those funding sources. This is the Union County Public Schools budget needs. This is as they presented to you at your joint meeting. This is not their official request. We have not received their official request. Their board is meeting tomorrow night, I believe, to present their recommended budget that we should receive by May 15th. So we just wanted to point that out, that this is only as they presented at the joint meeting. Their total CIP needs for FY24, this is only their operating capital, is $23,894,000. In our base budget for FY24, based on the growth in our Avalon tax base, in the base budget, we can fund $19,839,000 of that. So funding difference needed for this request to fully fund their ask is around $4 million. If you as a board wanted to give direction to staff to look for additional funding sources for the schools' capital needs, we could do that as well. And just keep in mind that as you discussed at your joint meeting going forward, we need to have additional conversations about their actual long-term capital needs and not just their annual operating cost.
And so for the board, we are, we are looking at strategies on how to fund these differences already. So we will give you some suggestions. Obviously, we, we recognize education are our partners is important. But obviously the pie is only so big. So we will bring you some suggestions and then you can decide where you go from there.
And so just to wrap it up, the next steps in our capital planning process is for long-term capital planning is we will continue to have discussions around water and sewer as they are working through their master plan. And actually tonight, you will hear from the Director of Solid Waste for the CIP needs for solid waste for next year and their long-term plan. We also need to receive the official request from Union County Public Schools for this year's budget. Following the budget adoption, we would not actually ask you to take any action on adopting the CIP projects until your meeting in July. And then again, as mentioned, we need to continue those capital discussions for the long-term educational, educational capital needs for the schools and South Piedmont for any upcoming bond requests they would have. And that concludes my presentation, unless you have any further questions on capital.
No questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Garbage man, solid waste.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the chair commissioners, management team. Happy to be here with you this evening to sort of give you a brief overview, brief overview of our solid waste program offerings, some of, highlight some of the challenges that we're facing as we move forward. And as Beverly mentioned, described for you our CIP plans moving forward. And also to give you a couple of recommendations as recommended by our consulting firm, MSW Consultants, who performed a rate study a while back, sort of examined our operational needs and, and made a couple of recommendations for how we might move forward to preserve our solid waste enterprise fund. Remember that our solid waste programs are funded primarily through the commercial haulers that bring our solid waste, MSW, to our transfer station and our construction demolition material to our landfill operations. So very simply, our program is couched in three, has three different elements. We have our municipal solid waste transfer station, which is our tipping floor where we transfer out the garbage brought in from commercial haulers. Tipping fees are paid based per ton from commercial haulers primarily. And we haul that material, we have a contract with Waste Connections that hauls that material to Hanson County currently. Our transportation and disposal contract is coming to expiration here next year. So we will be rebidding that. And just remember that even a modest increase to our per-ton rate that we pay will impact our program significantly. A second element of our program, of course, is our construction demolition landfill. This is our revenue generator out of the three. Again, commercial haulers bring material, they, we're charged them per ton to tip at our landfill facility. And both of these facilities are couched together on, off of Austin Chaney Road. We also operate five residential waste and recycling centers throughout the county. These centers are for convenient disposal of bagged household garbage and also provides the, the normal recycling services that many counties provide. Recycling centers are notoriously a cost of doing business. They never really generate enough revenue to support themselves. They were born out of a need to address the landfill bans throughout the state of North Carolina. NCDEQ and state law bans a particular list of materials from landfilling and recyclables are some of those materials. So recycling centers are an answer to that need to divert materials to get properly recycled. So those are the three elements of our program. There's a quick pic of our transfer station. You can see the commercial haulers tipping the garbage on our floor. We're doing a lot of tons these days. There's our CND landfill. Thank you to my colleague Chris Medlin, who's in the room, who keeps this facility sharp. He does a fantastic job. Here's our residential waste and recycling center at Austin Chaney. Now, the five centers I mentioned, I didn't include this number six, which is our recycling and waste center at our Austin Chaney main facility, mostly because this is a little bit different animal. Our recycling centers in, out in the world take bag household only. We're already pay-as-you-throw model, so the size of your bag, it takes the nominal fee that we charge per bag at those convenience centers. Our Austin Chaney takes not only the bag household garbage, but truckloads of waste, bulk items, yard debris, you name it, we service that here at Austin Chaney. And you can see that slide on the right-hand side of your screen at the bottom. That kind of gives you an idea of the volume of folks we're servicing. This site is part of our CIP, our future project wishlist. We have a design plan in place. We actually bid this project last week. Sadly, we only had two respondents, so we've had to rebid that project. We will be coming back to you for a refresh of this facility in the near future. As you can see, top right, it shows a citizen backing his pickup. It gives you a little bit of scale, so folks have to come in with their pickups or other vehicles, trailers, and throw that material up and over cans. So our redesign will provide for drop-off system, so folks can just push their material off and move on. Here's a quick map that shows the dispersment of our convenience centers throughout the county. Of course, our primary facility, Austin Chaney, opens six days a week, kind of in the top right in the winged community. What are some of our recent accomplishments here in solid waste? We've received a permit modification for an expansion of our construction demolition landfill. This is what we call a minor modification that has recently opened up about three acres of new area for us to landfill, which will provide about two years of capacity at current tonnage intake. I'll dive into that a little bit further. We do have a second permit modification at NCDEQ under review. We should see that within the next 12 months, I hope, and have approval on that. And that'll open up the rest of our site and represent the life of that facility, which is about 25 years' worth of capacity moving forward. We've initiated long-range planning for our CIP, as Beverly mentioned. I'll dive into that briefly very soon. We've solicited bids for construction. Again, we'll see those very soon and put those before you for a vote on that. We've developed a modest litter mitigation program using our part-time folks as we can, but we do commit folks to the roadsides at least weekly. And we've recently secured, haven't secured a contract, we've got our vendor back. And we'll be bringing a contract for your approval very soon for our yard waste processing. This is the grinding and the hauling out of our material that's brought to the landfill. That's yard waste, vegetative, leaf and limb. Some key initiatives for our programs moving forward. I mentioned the CND landfill expansion. That is our, that's the big, the big one there. Soon as we get that permit, we will move into the major mod area, providing us 25 years of additional capacity. And we have a number of CIP projects that sort of make that happen. The first being the Austin Chaney Convenience Center rework. And some of that roadway will lead into the second project, which is a scale house that will stand up the new area at our CND facility. Key initiative three there, again, secure favorable transportation and disposal contract. As I mentioned, it's very vital that we, we get a handle on that cost. If you think about the three elements of our program, the transfer, the CND operation is a revenue generator. The MSW transfer station consider that a break even, and the convenience centers are a cost. So we rely heavily on the success of our CND operation. We want to continue to approve upon strategies to maintain permit compliance with respect to newly regulated compounds. You've probably been hearing about some new regulated compounds in the wastewater world. We're also a highly regulated facility that we maintain a number of permits with NCDEQ. And we have just received a litany of new compounds that we have to monitor. And that means paying folks to come out, take those samples and provide reports for us. So beginning July 1, our costs are going up in the realm of environmental compliance. Key initiative number five, to establish a funding mechanism to, for our planned CIP and also to establish a minimum of 180 days of operational reserves. We don't have that right now, and if we have a downturn where CND dries up, we no longer can fund our program. So to have that cash on hand and that policy to maintain 180 days of operational reserve, we think is a vital goal. We also need to identify, secure and source cover material for our landfill operation. Up to now, we've been able to mine future areas of our expansion. As we move into that new area, which will be the final area of our landfill, we will run out of material to cover with. And so in our daily operation, we're required to cover with soil. We're going to have to import that soil. That's going to be a new cost to hit our program in the near future. And lastly, as I mentioned, to build a scale house to stand up that new CND area. So there's a quick snapshot of our CIP projects. There you go, Austin Chaney redesign, landfill expansion and scale house. They all sort of work together in our plan, and then we've got future wishes for access road widening. A landfill operations center, which is a little bit farther out in the future, but I'll show you in a subsequent slide why that's important. And I'll do a little more paving at a goldmine recycling facility. And also MSW transfer station expansion. As tonnage increases, we'll eventually reach the threshold of our maximum allowable tons at our transfer station, so we need a little more under roof in a permit mod to continue, just to keep up with the trash that's coming our way. There is a topographical map of, a biographical map of our CND facility. The green area represents the area that's already filled. The pink area represents about a three-acre piece of land there in the center that has just been permitted. That's the minor mod. That, that'll give us about two years of capacity there. And hopefully, when we receive our major modification, which is this yellow area, again, that'll get us into 25 years of capacity at current tons. So the slide on the left is that picture I showed you at the front end of this presentation. That's the gravel lot with engraved cans. It's very tight. And what we want to do is replace that with this facility here, which has a designated entrance, lots of pavement, a reasonable traffic flow, recessed 40-yard boxes for folks to pull in and back up to these, this herringbone wall situation, tip their garbage and move out in a safe and efficient manner. There's that future project I was talking about. That's our current ops building, sadly. This, this, this facility right now is our compliance library for NCDEQ compliance inspections. It's where our guys wash up bathroom facilities, break room and offices for the staff out there. So this is a sorely needed project that's also included in our future capital plan. So what are some challenges we're facing in solid waste? Again, to address increased operational equipment cost trends. Anecdotally, real quick, I'll let you know that not five years ago, you could buy a trash compactor, which is a necessary piece of equipment in the landfill business. You could get one for in the $600,000 range, and now they're about 900,000 plus. So inflation has hit us hard. And of course, the price of diesel, we burn through a lot of diesel. We also need to address program reliance on CND revenue. As I mentioned, we're putting all our eggs in one basket with the CND. If we have a downturn that dries up our CND, we'll be in a bind. So what we're aiming to do is sort of diversify that revenue throughout our program. We need to increase, we are facing increased environmental compliance regulations, as I mentioned earlier, and increased tonnage. Here's a little snapshot for you. 2018, five years ago, we were doing 242 daily garbage tons. Now we're doing 535 daily. We were doing 102 CND tons. Now we're doing 263. It's more than 130% increase in total waste managed by our program. Here's another little snapshot that's just basically telling the story again that costs are going up. This blue bar represents revenue generated solely by the MSW transfer station. The gold bar represents only our transportation and disposal contract costs. So as you can see, the gold bar is starting to eclipse the revenue. And again, this is not an overall revenue expenditure chart. It is simply money coming in for MSW and what we pay to get it out the door. So how do we address these inflationary, disinflationary situations? We reached out to, MSW Consultants was a firm that was hired to do a rate study, take a look at our program, look at our revenue generators and identify ways that we can continue to provide, to fund a healthy, or to maintain a healthy enterprise fund. Their recommendations were this. Option one was to levy an availability fee on all the households in the county. It'd be a one-time, and a one-time tip fee increase for the commercial side of the house, our commercial haulers. And option two is not an availability fee, but a graduated tipping fee increase from next year to 2027. The problem with the option two model right now, where we stand, is we have a number of vendor contracts that are coming to expiration here within the next, by the end of 2024. Again, the T and D contract is one of those. And those are going to be a real look at what our future expenses are going to be. So they built their model based on a look back at historical data. So if we choose a graduated tipping fee moving forward to keep our enterprise fund healthy, I suggest we do a one-time fee increase, and then we put a pin in it, come back next year and evaluate based on the most current data. So let's talk just briefly about what option one means. This is the household availability fee. Remember I said that we operate currently, our convenience centers are a pay-as-you-throw model, nominal fee based on the bag of garbage. A household availability fee takes away that cash transaction at the center and applies a annual fee to all the households in the county. So there's some inherent inequity in that model, right? If you live in a incorporated municipality, you already receive curbside service of some level. So the consultant addressed that through a three-tiered system. So based on the level of solid waste services that each municipality receives, that sort of placed them into the three-tier model. So we've got some, Weddington, for example, paying 20 dollars a year. Indian Trail Installings paying 38 dollars a year. And the rest of the rural county and incorporated, but no service provided by, would pay the 75 dollars a year. So three-tier rate system. What this gets us is 180-day target operating reserve by 2027 and does stabilize our revenues, so we wouldn't have as much reliance on CND. This is another quick look at the municipalities and the services that they're provided. Notice that Waxall gets a once-a-week yard waste recycling and trash, and a four-times-a-year bulk waste in the entrail, and they're in tier one. Indian Trail's in tier two with a one-time-a-week garbage, every other week yard waste and recycling. And again, a quarterly bulk waste touch. And of course, unincorporated gets no service. So at a glance, this is what option one looks like. This is the availability fee plus one-time tipping fee increase. Tier one, 20 dollars. Tier two, 38 dollars. Tier three, 75 dollars. One-time, or annual fee. And then a modest increase of 3 dollars, it looks like, for both CND and MSW, which would be applied to our commercial side of the house, commercial haulers. What's the value add to municipalities in the county? So for that household availability, availability fee, what do you get? You get an increased opportunity to dispose of bulk items at no cost to users, well, prepaid cost. In other words, where those municipalities only had a quarterly opportunity to get rid of their sofa mattress box spring, they could bring that anytime to our facility at no charge. They get increased frequency of county-sponsored household hazardous waste disposal. I realize that now we offer, the county offers a one-time-a-year household hazardous waste collection event. This is for your pesticides, herbicides, fuels, you know, that kind of thing. Those, those no-no's that you wouldn't put in your garbage. With this user fee, we would be able to provide more frequent HHW collection. We could enhance our litter mitigation program, commit a full-time crew and truck to the roadsides of Union County if we choose this option. It would allow disposal of household garbage at all of our sites free of charge. Realize that bag, that these aren't as clean as they sound. Bag limits would apply because there are some unscrupulous folks that would start a garbage company and try to bring it to your convenience center and throw all those bags away. So we would say perhaps up to 10 bags free, and then we would have to charge after that.
How much, how much money would that program that you talked about generate?
So according to the MSW report, it's around 3 million dollars is what the revenue looks like, if I remember correctly.
Okay, basically, one penny, less than one penny on the tax rate. Wouldn't it be better just to pay it through the tax rate?
Well, you know, with an enterprise fund, you know, we've always been able to cash flow our projects and our operations without impacting the taxpayer. This gives us a way to continue cash flow, but philosophically, it's definitely a shift from us cash flowing our, our own operations. I think the alternative is to simply increase, which is option two really, to increase our tipping fee rates to cover our future expenses.
Let me tell you, I'm playing out here over many years. I'm tired of paying to take my garbage off. I get no services, don't even get garbage. And that's the people in the rural areas of the county who get very little but pay taxes.
Sure.
So, you know, I've always thought it'd be nice to find some way of just, you know, if everybody uses this or is available to them, like you said, for hauling away a mattress or whatever. If it's going to cost us 3 million dollars, then, you know, that's, like I said, that's a penny effect on the tax rate. And I'm not saying raise taxes a penny, but I'm saying let's look at, maybe that's the way we need to go is giving those folks who feel like they get nothing for their, for their tax, they pay. A farmer with a, you know, $200,000 combine, you know, 300,000 now he said, or if they got a compactor, that's 900,000. So, you know, this, this, I'm going to be real frank with you. This deserves a little bit more attention than the end of a long meeting.
Certainly.
And, and if, and if we, we, let's continue, but this is something that we're going to have to look hard at and get real creative and out of the box with.
So there's two components, and I want to make sure that there's, there's a, there's a more critical decision that we're going to have to make, and that has to do with tipping fees. And the reason that's critical is because we have a contract that's coming up that's based on the commercial haulers and how we deal with that. The, not that the other one's not important, but the, the other decision is what do we do with the fact that we do actually lose money on the recycling centers? And how do we adjust that as well as make, you know, make those decisions for a long-term capital? Again, we don't have to make those decisions in this budget year. This is really about giving the board information so you can see it, you can understand it. If the board is supportive of looking at more of a tax rate structure versus a fee structure, that's fine too. That's what we're here for, is to get some feedback from the board.
Some counties give a sticker.
So when you employ these availability fees, it comes with challenges. One is how do you throttle, who's using your center if everybody throws for free? Some use a hanger, some use a sticker. Some are as complicated as the site attendants receive tax records frequently. And it gets complicated because folks, some folks would game the system. They would, again, bring more waste than, than what the program is designed for. So there are load limits or...
Some people need to bring more waste in.
That's true.
Some people, some people have it in their yards.
Certainly.
And stacked up.
So it is a complicated thing to think about. I can just say this, that the study realized that 25 out of 100 counties have a household availability fee in place. I would suggest that as programs that have revenue generators like we do, like our... I would suggest that as programs that have revenue generators like we do, like our CND landfill, as those resources deplete, so 25 years from now, when we no longer have our CND landfill, we will need to replace that with another funding model. So, you know, the availability fee sort of gets, that's what you get to down the road. We may not be there yet, but we definitely need to think about how to continue to keep our enterprise fund healthy as we move forward. So what are some advantages of that availability fee? Again, decreased cash handling at our recycling centers, stabilize our funding, and gets to our 180 days of reserve by 2027. Again, that option two is nothing more than an incremental increase in our tipping fees through 2027. But again, we've got all these contracts, what is that, eight contracts that will be expired by the end of 2024. So we need to see what those come back as, so that we know what our costs are going to be before we commit to a tiered fee increase structure.
And just to clarify, this is what we have now. This is what we currently charge, this tiered tipping fee. And to Caleb's point and Brian's point, there's a lot that's going to happen over the next year that'll dictate what the future looks like. If we wanted to move to an availability fee, it's probably, it's too late in the year to do it for this fiscal year. So knowing that we're going to have some contracts expiring that need renewed, and knowing that you have a lot of options when it comes to a availability fee, you can do it a lot of different ways. I think what we're asking for is to buy into this incremental step for one year. Let us renegotiate those contracts and then come back to you with some options mid-year, next year, and say, if we did want to entertain an availability fee, here's what it can look like, here's what other counties are doing, here's some options that y'all have. And maybe you look at all that and say, no, we want to keep doing what we are doing, and that's okay. But it gives us a little bit of time to talk through it and think through it.
And the slide you're looking at now is our recommendation for a abbreviated option two, which is a simple fee increase to our commercial haulers on our trash and construction debris side to the tune of what you see here in our 2024. This is just a snapshot, a look back at our sort of revenues and expenditures, and all I'm really trying to highlight here for you is that the revenues and expenditures are tight, that we run a very tight ship, and we're looking down the barrel of increased costs of doing business due to the regulatory concerns and just standard cost to do a business inflation. The realized dollars here aren't necessarily what we made, because these haven't been transferred, allocated to our CIP, nor our obligatory post-closure fund. So again, we run a tight ship, costs are going up, we just need to do something to increase our revenue. So increased tipping fees, I think is a good first step for next year. That's all I have. This could be the end. Do you have any questions?
Anybody have any questions? All right.
Thank you, folks.
Talking trash. And that brings us to the end of all these presentations, right? And now, we've got a closed session that I'm going to make a motion for in a minute, but let's go ahead and do our commissioners' comments and county managers' comments. And you know that resolution? And if, Ryan Matthews, do you, county manager, do you have any comments?
I just want to say that I appreciate the board's patience. There's a lot of information. And again, we're not asking for any decisions tonight. This is giving you information, making you aware of things that will be potentially built into the manager's recommended budget, and then we'll go from there. But thank you very much.
Thank you. Vice Chair Melissa Merrill.
I have no comments, fortunately.
David, I mean, Brian Helms?
Yeah, well, first of all, thanks to the staff. I know that you guys put a lot of time and effort into these presentations and the information that was shared. I also want to thank all of our speakers that came to our meeting earlier and spoke about their concerns. Certainly appreciate, you know, the involvement from the public. No doubt that we've got some challenges in front of us here, but where there's challenges, there's also opportunity. So look forward to seeking out some opportunities in the next few months. That's all that I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. David Williams?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll cut my comments way back since it's getting late. Just to echo Commissioner Brian Helms's comments, thank you to staff for the long, hard slog tonight and staying with us at this late hour. We appreciate your time and effort in putting all this together. It's a bit overwhelming, the information, but thank you. Also, just to reiterate Commissioner Helms's comments, I was, I thought it was marvelous the turnout we had and informal comments. I mean, the citizen engagement was really robust and deserves big applause. And in particular, speaking to folks who are, who came as advocates for animals and animal lovers, and frankly, I think that's most of us. You know, I'd like to just share my view that taking a long perspective, kind of stretching your perspective is important. And, you know, I think back 14 months ago, when we didn't have a county veterinarian, we weren't performing spays and neuters in the shelter, we didn't have rabies clinics. And now, even in a month where we had, have kind of had a partial closure at the shelter in terms of general intake, last I checked, our veterinarian did, I think, 40 or more perhaps spanneurs at the surgical clinic. So, you know, we may be in the second inning of this thing, but I'm encouraged. We've taken a lot of positive steps in terms of advancing animal welfare. And last thing I'd like to say is I was really encouraged up here, the conversation that kind of got started around the topic of animal welfare. And I, for one, welcome the opportunity to work with my colleagues on that issue. I think there were some ideas thrown out tonight from the citizens and among us that are worthy of further exploration, and I embrace that opportunity. Thank you.
All right. I've got no comments. I'm ready to go to bed. If you, if we now move to go, to move the board, go into closed session for the following reasons. Got to put my glasses on. In accordance with GS 143-318.11A1, to prevent the disclosure of information that is privileged or confidential pursuant to GS 153A-98 and 143-8318.10E, and in accordance with GS 143-318-11A3, to consult with an attorney in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege, and in accordance with GS 143-318-116, to consider the qualifications, competence, performance, character, fitness, condition of appointment, or conditions of initial employment of an individual public officer or employee for prospective public, or prospective public officer or employee, or to hear or investigate a complaint, charge, or grievance by or against an individual public officer or employee. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.